All right, welcome everyone to the Monday, June or July 16, 2018 work session of the Falls Church City Council. We're delighted to have you all here with us, and it's good to be back. We've had our hiatus of a couple of weeks. It's good to get back in the saddle. So, Mr. Shields, I guess our first item of order is the library project update?
That's correct, Mayor, members of council. So I'm joined by our project manager, Kim Callahan, from our Department of Public Works, library director, Jenny Carroll, and the chairman of the library board, Mr. Dan Gernand. What is requested tonight is a review of the CIMAR contract, and have a discussion with staff about what this contract does. What the request is that it be scheduled for formal action a week from tonight at your next meeting on July 23. So I'll turn it over to Ms. Callahan for a presentation on the contract, and we can provide any other updates the council would like.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Can you hear me? Okay. So yes, what I planned to do tonight was to give you an update on the progress we've made on the project to date, both on the design aspect and the CIMAR aspect, and then talk about the required next steps to keep the project moving forward. So if you remember, back in January of this year, we approved, council approved a task order award for BKV architects to provide architectural and design construction administration services. And since that time, we have done a lot of public outreach. We've done community visioning sessions with the general public, with the library board, and with library staff. The BKV design team also came up with several different conceptual designs. And these, when I say conceptual designs, they're very basic in nature. There's not a lot of detail. It's mainly a space program plan, essentially. They are also called blocking and stacking diagrams. So it's really just blocks of space within the, within the library for that program element, like children's section, or a meeting room, or adult section, or history. There's not a lot of detail. It's blocks of space. And why we create these plans is so that the library board and the library staff can kind of talk about how they want the library to function, how they want the different pieces of the library to fit together so that it best, so that it works well for them. So where, what, what goes on the first floor and the second floor, and how the entrance is situated. Those are the big decisions that we need to make before we can move on to schematic design. The, as I mentioned, the big decisions that the library board will be making a recommendation on is whether to have the entrance of the new library at the corner of Park Avenue in North Virginia, or Park Avenue, as it was shown in the master plan. And the other big topic is where the children's area goes. Does it go on the top floor or the bottom floor? And at the July 18 board meeting, which is this Wednesday, we, our plans for them to make their recommendation at that meeting. They've seen these block plans before. They've been discussed preliminarily. They've had time to think about it. So now we're going to have another meeting to discuss them and hopefully come to a consensus on how we want to move forward. Once the library board comes up with that decision, we'll present it to council. Our thought was that we would present it at the 23rd meeting when we come back for approval of the CIMAR contract. And then we can move forward with schematic design, if there are no major concerns over the, the space planning document. The other piece of the project we've been working on is the construction manager at risk selection process. And that also started in January of this year, when we advertised a invitation for qualified contractors. So it's very, the same as the city hall. We put an ad out for contracting firms that were interested in providing CIMAR services for the library project, and they submitted a statement of qualifications. We reviewed those qualifications and pre-qualified the set of contractors to invite them to participate in the request for proposal process. We did, the selection committee, who is made up of myself, the library director, director of public works, one of our senior planners, and the architect from BKV, reviewed the proposal from Centennial Contractors and unanimously agreed that we wanted to move forward with Centennial as our construction manager at risk. They had great references. They, they understood the importance of the building to the city. They expressed an interest, without any prodding from us, in being a partner with us, and really being on board during the whole design phase, and understanding what the city needs and wants for their library. So we, we moved forward into the negotiation phase, and we, in June and July, we negotiated the final scope of services and the fee for that contract. And that's listed in here as a, an amount not to exceed $195,000. That's $189,000 for just the pre-construction services, and then additional, a little over $5,000 for reimbursable expenses. We want to get them involved early on, so that we can, we want to invest upfront, so that we hope to eliminate problems during construction. The more we have them looking at the plans, doing constructibility reviews, value engineering, providing cost estimates at each of the stages of design, the more likelihood we have of keeping the project on track through design and through construction. As you can see in the, in the basic scope that I have in the staff report, at each stage of the, of the design, once we get some details, they're, they're doing a cost study, they're putting together a schedule, they're doing a constructibility review, they're thinking about the staging and logistics during construction, because this is a very tight site, so we have to think about how to minimize impacts on our neighbors. There's also a lot of design review meetings as we go forward. Once we get the 100 percent documents complete, and the permits are approved, Centennial will come up with a GMP, and we can move forward with the second phase, which is the construction administration services. But for next week, on the 23rd, we're just looking for approval of the pre-construction services. One of the, some of the information that was obtained, as I mentioned, we wanted Centennial on board early on, so they could provide valuable input to us going forward. And one of the things that came up, just even during the RFP process, was that question of phasing, having to phase occupied construction versus a vacant building. And based on the information that Centennial gave us, they can save us 10 to 12 months on the 24-month construction schedule if we completely vacate the building and move library services off-site during construction. So just in GC fees, the fees that go to the general contractor, that could save us approximately $360,000. That could go into the cost of construction of the project, rather than to the general contractor. And this was brought up during the library board meeting in June, and the board agreed that if we could find a way to provide limited services off-site during construction, then they would be on board with completely closing the library down during construction. So our immediate next steps are to, again, get the library board to agree on a blocking and stacking diagram that, that they agree on, present that to council, have our construction manager at risk contract awarded, and then we can move forward on to schematic design. And when schematic design will have a little bit more detail, a little bit more meat to it, we can have Centennial put costs to that. And once we have the design and know that our costs are lining up with our budget, we will then present that design back to council before moving forward to design development. So you can look forward to seeing us back next week for the blocking and stacking diagram and the CIMAR proposal, and then late September, early October for schematic design.
All right, questions? Thank you, Mayor, for all your work. I know you guys love visiting, and I appreciate it. Questions, council, Ms. Arti?
Hi, thank you. Just a quick clarifying question. So the amount that we approved was 880 for BKV earlier in the year, and then now this is 195, so the sum of 1 million or so, that is coming from the 8.7 that was approved?
Yes, that's all coming.
Okay. That was all, thank you.
Other questions? Vice Mayor Connolly?
Did you have other proposals, other than Centennial, that went to the second phase?
We, this, the Centennial contract was the proposal that the selection committee decided to move forward with, and that we were comfortable with, and that we thought would do the best job for the city.
But were there others that submitted, and they were turned down?
Well, Centennial was the only one that submitted. But that doesn't mean that-
Right, that's fine.
-we had to go forward with them. We could re-advertise if we wanted to, but the selection committee really, we liked Centennial. So we were, we were not disappointed that, you know, it was an easy decision, because they, they, they provided all of the information we needed, they showed an interest in the project, so we felt comfortable moving forward.
Have we ever worked with them before?
Yes, actually, they, so their references are that, two of their bigger references are Fairfax County and Stafford County. And they've worked with Stafford County for over 14 years, doing projects with them, and they have just glowing references. The other, Fairfax County has a job order contract, so it's a kind of an on-call construction administration services, and we actually can ride, Falls Church City can ride that contract. And we've used our, Public Works Operations Department has used them for several projects, for the Cherry Hill Barn, the fueling station, and the stairs at the, the operations building. And they, they had wonderful experience with them. So that's good news.
That's good to know. As far as relocating the library for the year or so that it's under construction, is, so that, that would be an additional cost-
Right.
-but it would, that would be included in the money that is in the bond?
That could, well, there's different ways to, to look at it. Jenny and I, it could be taken out of the bond money, but it could also potential, I don't know, it could potentially be taken from operation costs if we're not operating the building during that time period.
Okay.
It would, when we looked at, we looked at the 400 North Washington lease, and based on those numbers, if we wanted to potentially even use that building, we're looking at $80,000, around $80,000 for the year.
Okay. And, and then what is the time that we think we're gonna, the library would be closed? Or is it too soon, really, to know on the timeframe?
I'm thinking early fall of 2019 to early fall of 2020.
Okay. Very good. And then as far as the CIMAR goes, you said you're here early because you want them to work together.
Right.
Are there other opportunities where we would delay this, and they would come in later, but that would probably cost us more money?
Well, we're required to have the CIMAR on board prior to the start of schematic, prior to the end of schematic. But we're bringing them on at the beginning of schematic design.
Okay. And that will be a money saver, efficiency saver?
Just to get their input as early on as possible, to help, you know, facilitate good decision-making going forward in the early start.
Okay.
Part of the project.
Thank you.
So with your, thank you. So with your accelerated schedule, you would contemplate then being finished with the whole building by late 2020?
Fall of 2020, yes.
Okay. And in the interim period of time, how much, you know, library business would need to be conducted at a alternative location, or you're not going to have the full collection available, right? It would be a limited service of some sort, right?
Correct. But even, even if we stayed in the building and phased it, there'd be a period of time where we'd have to pare down the services.
Sure.
So no matter what we do, we're going to have to pare down the services. You know, Jenny and I have been talking about different options on, on how to address this. We haven't come up with a full plan yet, but yes, it would be very limited services. Some of the collection would have to go into storage during that year, but we would still provide services, still have the full staff working for the library.
Right. So there'd be a square foot rough number that we would be looking for that might be provided at 400 North Washington, or might be provided somewhere else?
Right. If we went, if we were looking to relocate to 400 North Washington, they have about 4,500 square feet. So we were thinking maybe the, the children's section, but we would have to do storytime somewhere else, potentially the community center, or in the park, if it's a nice day. It would just have to function differently, but we would, we could provide the books for the children, maybe the new releases at the library, and then staff could, could work on the second floor, where the police are right now, where Chief Gavin is.
If I could suggest, when the snake fella comes, I think it ought to be at a Tartar's house. Okay, thank you.
I've heard that show many times. Mr. Z?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm glad that embedded in this staff report is the, the notion that you would be vacating the library completely. I'm glad that you seized the opportunity to take a hard look at what the savings could be, especially now that we're faced with tariffs and increase in costs for materials, steel, aluminum, wood, other kinds of things that would drive the cost of library to perhaps a point of where you might have to make some sacrifices. On line eight three, you're going to get to the final GMP bid book, construction document. Can you remind us again when, when that's contemplated, which would be the end of the pre-construction phase services, correct?
Right. So for starting construction in the fall of 2019, we would be bringing a GMP to you that, that summer, maybe, I don't know if you're, if you're in session in August, potentially August or September of next year, we would have a GMP to bring forward. That's the schedule currently.
So the period between approximately 13 months for this $195,000, and you only received one bid, can someone who's here tonight tell the council how that price compares to the government estimate for these services?
The government? Oh, like our, our original estimate?
Like the city hall project?
No, no. What our estimate would be for the service.
What I had in my, my budget was $150,000.
Was it $150?
Yes, that was what I had originally budgeted. So it's slightly over.
But it came at 195?
Correct.
Are you at liberty to disclose what the discrepancies or deltas came from?
When I came up with that amount, it was really just a swag, honestly, based on what city hall, I heard from city hall, and the fact that I knew we wanted additional services. So there's no really comparing it.
So you did it on percentage of construction, or, or how was it done? Give me some clue as to how you arrived at your swag.
Oh, well, based on the city hall numbers, that the, the proposals that they got for their CIMAR, I think was around $100,000, but they had fewer services. So I just, I padded it a little bit, because I knew that we wanted to provide additional service, we wanted more work from our CIMAR. Again, and we have a smaller construction project, it's not as big of a contract as city hall, so they're not making as much money on the construction end of it, so they're going to charge, but we're asking them to put still a lot of work into the pre-construction phase, so they're going to charge us for that. And the way that we came up, they came up with that $189,000, was we had them, for each task, we had each staff, each of their staff members provide their hourly rate and the number of hours that they were going to spend on that task, and we saw how much they were spending, and it came up to a total amount. So it wasn't just a number that they, they picked out. We vetted it, we negotiated it. The original number was, I think we, we cut down their original proposal by about $60,000. We did do some negotiation with them to try to get the, the number closer to where we wanted it to be.
Okay. Moving on to two decisions that you said would have to be made by the team going forward with regards to functionality, the new entrance and the children's spaces.
Mm-hmm.
Are there cost implications either way for the decisions to be made?
Right. So what we did at the, when they put together their, their concepts, we did have a conceptual cost estimate done to compare the different options, corner entrance versus side entrance, and children's upstairs versus children's downstairs. And there's virtually no cost implications on the, putting the children upstairs or downstairs. It's a wash, it's the same. But there is a slightly, based on the preliminary cost estimate, there is a increased cost for putting the entrance at the corner, at this stage. Again, we need to refine the, the documents, and if we need to, to cut the cost, we can try to scale back on the entrance. If, if the corner entrance is what functionally works best for the library, we can figure out a way to, to scale that back, to, so that the costs are more in line.
Well, thank you for that. I would, I would urge the, the team, the library board, the library staff, and you, of course, most importantly, that where there are opportunities to be conservative with costs, that you take those opportunities, and you seize those opportunities, and you make the most of them, even if there is going to be a slight loss, slight loss on functionality, so to speak, if you move the, the entrance, or keep it where it is. That I am, as others on this council are well aware, that our construction costs are probably shortly expected to go to places where they haven't been before, and I don't want this project to be unaffordable. The last thing we want to do is go back to the taxpayers and say, "We need more money." We can give them every reason in the world, and they're all good reasons, but we cannot simply, cannot ask them for additional money for this library project.
Right. We understand that completely, which is one of the reasons we want the CIMAR on board now, so they can, they're the ones that are going to have to build it and price it. So we're asking them for costs as we move through the project, to, to make sure that we're not going over our budget. And the, the board has been made aware that they're going to have to make some hard decisions. We're going to have to prioritize what, what the goals and requirements are for this library, because we may have to make some difficult decisions moving forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Arti?
I had two more questions. So going back, I must have not read the staff report. I thought there were four firms that were qualified, but it sounds like only one of the four firms actually bid, is that correct?
Right. We qualified four firms, pre-qualified, and only one decided to actually submit a proposal.
Are we able to talk about why, or do we know why the only one submitted?
Yeah, I would defer maybe to Jim, Mr. Wise.
Yes, we, one firm contacted us and said that between the time they were qualified and the proposal was due, they had been awarded other contracts, and didn't feel that they had the resources to serve us in the, the manner that we deserved. They didn't want to bite off more than they could chew, as it were. The other two, quite frankly, felt that the pre-construction services that we were acquiring weren't, weren't valued highly enough for them to put the labor into it. And you may have noticed that the cost of pre-construction for this project is higher than what we originally had on the city hall project. We undervalued the city hall pre-construction services. That was our first CIMAR experience. We learned a valuable lesson there. As Kim was just saying a few minutes ago, on how she had developed what she thought the pre-construction cost would be, and then what our negotiation conversations with the offer turned out to be. I'm, I'm comfortable with the number that we arrived at, based on what we are going to require them to do, and knowing what our experience with city hall had been.
So despite only having one bid, we feel good that the 195 is competitive?
Yes. And we would all, negotiated with the top-ranked offer anyway, which they were clearly in the lead going into the final round. So while we were disappointed we didn't have more to review, we were very satisfied with, with the way they presented themselves, and I'm very impressed with what they have shown us, and we've had good experience with them on our other experience, their references are impeccable. So I'm very comfortable with the situation.
Okay. My second question's really around the cost again. So following up on what Mr. Z was asking about, I think everyone's pretty sensitive to the cost of construction, and I think we had heard early rumblings that early cost estimates would be higher than what we thought it would be. Do we have an update on where that stands, especially in light of, I think you were saying that closing the library would save us $300,000, so maybe that helps us on the construction prices?
Exactly. And then, sorry, can you bring the mic back to you? Thank you.
Yes. We haven't done additional cost estimates, but we had, what, what I looked at was the different costs in that estimate, and trying to analyze those and break those out and figure out. So this is a cost estimate based on a block plan, right? There's not a lot of detail. It's very conservative. It's based on basic square footages and cost per square footage. And there are things that we just don't know yet, so they've plugged a number in there that's usually a conservative number. So as we get more information, we can start to tighten up that number. For instance, one of the things was phasing. Another thing is hazardous materials remediation. In our cost estimate, they plugged in a number of about $275,000, because for hazardous materials. This building was built in the 50s, it could be full of asbestos. So one of the things we're doing to try to better understand that number is, we were almost complete with the hazardous materials study. So those are the things we're trying to do to, to get a better handle on the costs. I, I think it's a conservative estimate, but construction costs are going up and up, so it's in our best interest to be conservative at this point. And at the last board meeting, we had a discussion on what their priorities are if we had to cut things out. And one of the things that the board said was that they wanted as much space as they could get for their money, and they were willing to maybe sacrifice on some of the upgrades in the existing part of the building for a later date. One of the other things I have is almost $700,000 in FFNE. That was, it was thought that we would get all new furniture and new shelving, so maybe we put that money into the hard cost and provide new shelving at a later date, once we get additional funds for, for operating expenses.
I mean, I think the reality is we haven't had a project come in below what we think, and so I think it's appropriate to be conservative. I think that, the thing that, the concern I have in the back of my mind, I'm worried about is, are we going to have to cut scope so much at some point to stay with, below the 8.7, that we would reconsider the project, and therefore, are we throwing another 195 against something that we may end up delaying, for example? Or decide that, gosh, this is way too much for, you know, the actual scope that we're going to get, and we have to reevaluate the project site? That would be my only concern, is we've already put 880 in it, which obviously is sunk costs, but do we want to put another 200 into it, if we are worried that construction prices are going to be indeed much higher than we're willing to have appetite for?
Right. I think my, my response to that would be, we have, we've committed those funds, we've encumbered those funds. We haven't actually spent the 880 or spent the 195. So we're, we're going to be getting cost estimates, updated cost estimates at each stage of design. So if we see costs going way above where we, where we think we can afford at 65 percent or at design development, we could look, we could reevaluate at that point, before we spend all of that 880 and all of that 195.
Okay. How much have we actually spent, if we haven't said?
About $60,000.
Okay. And then do we expect to spend any more beyond the 1 million up until GMP?
No, no. I mean, there will be, I have, there are additional costs, like a transportation, a TMD, or Transportation Demand Management study that has to be done. I have to get a commissioning agent on board, but we won't, we won't be spending all of that money for the commissioning agent in the design stages. Some of that is construction stage, so.
Thank you.
I think my total budget for soft cost was 1.2.
All right, other questions? So I've got a question or two for you. So if you do shut down, or kind of partially shut down, what happens to staff? Do you have any staff that wouldn't have work, that might want work during that interim period?
As it stands right now, we intend to keep our staff.
So if you move somewhere else and had sort of more limited service, you'd still keep everyone on during that period of time?
We would.
Okay.
We would find projects for them to do, to complete during that time, that we would need to have done.
Okay.
Yeah.
And this has already been alluded to, but the total budget, do you feel comfortable that you can come in at the budget that was discussed previously? The eight-point?
The 8.7 in the referendum?
Yes.
So far, I think we've-
So we know that our budget is 8.7, and we're not, we're not allowed, we're not going to be asking for additional money. So whether that means cutting scope, or delaying purchase of furniture, you know, we'll just have to, we'll have to make that, that budget work.
I would say that I'm aware, Kim is aware, I feel like both our architect and our CIMAR are aware of our budget constraints, and that what we have is the 8.7 million that was in the referendum, that's what we have to work with. And we have to stay within that, you know, that budget that we're allotted, so.
But do you feel, though, for that number, maybe costs have gone up, are you still getting the essence of what people expect?
I think we can.
Okay. Last question about public outreach. You know, for a lot of people, this is a special place, the library, especially those with kids. Are you guys reaching out to the public at all during this process, like the patrons, or having any outreach sessions, you know, like on a Sunday afternoon up here to either solicit input, or just let people know kind of what's going on?
We did in-
January.
January. We had multiple sessions where the public could come. Some were targeted. Like we had one for school-age children, parents of school-age children. So that's when we were verifying our programming, and what this, what people wanted to see. And we wanted to make sure that what people had initially expressed as their desires for the library in the master plan and the master plan addendum were still, were still holding true. And so we also worked with the library board as well, to confirm that they, we were still in the same place. And it's, it's still held true. You know, public space, upgrading, you know, our infrastructure, becoming ADA compliant, those were all things that, and maintaining our collection, those were all things that the public were expressing still, and that the library board was as well.
I'm going to encourage you-
So, and I would say, we're going to continue to do public, sorry, that we'd continue to do public outreach. It will probably next occur around the schematic design. However, that doesn't keep people from telling me, whenever they see me at the Starbucks, at the farmer's market, in the library, about what they'd like to see and what they hope for the library, and, and from the library board as well, expressing their priorities and their desires for the library.
Yeah, I would just encourage you to continue to do that. I think some of the big decisions you're talking about are, you know, where the kids, the children's room is upstairs, downstairs, where the entrances are. I think people would want to participate, and I think on council, we would as well, to not just sort of hear it's already a done decision, but, you know, we'd like to solicit your input on these two choices and the like, or whatever is presented with you. So I would just encourage you to, to do that as time goes on.
So at the library board meeting on this Wednesday, will, the library board will be talking about that, and so it's an open public meeting as well, all of the library board meetings are.
Yeah. Mr. Snyder?
Just following up on the mayor, the tiles in the stairway are of significance to some members of the community.
some members of the community. So I'm saving you having to deal with me later in the week by saying it now since you're here, so anyway.
That was one of the things that came through pretty clearly, is the attachment to the tiles in the children's room. Along with all the other memorials that we have in the library as well. So we will be working with the architect and the library consultants around preserving those.
Thank you.
Any other comments? We do have a pretty busy agenda tonight. Any other questions, comments? All right, thank you all very much. Look forward to hearing more from you. Appreciate your efforts today. All right, so next on the agenda is a comprehensive plan update regarding the housing chapter. Mr. Shields, would you like to introduce this matter?
Thank you. And so we have Dana Lewis and Nancy Vincent, and our member of our Housing Commission Board, and our intern, Alex. So Dana, are you going to present the staff report?
Well, actually, I was going to go to the third part.
Okay. Okay. So there's no formal action requested tonight. This really is just a kickoff discussion for this chapter of the comp plan. If you'll notice, on the last page of the staff report, that's where the schedule is discussed and what the intent is to really engage with the public between now and February, when that's the targeted date for the council to take action on a new chapter, housing chapter to our comp plan. So with that introduction, Ms. Lewis, or would you like to introduce Alex first, and then we can, we can go from there?
Good evening. Dana Lewis, Housing Program Analyst with the City of Falls Church. And this is Alex McMillan, and he is our Housing Research Intern, and also went to all the Falls Church public schools and just graduated from JMU and got his master's. So we're really excited to have him. He's going to be taking the first part of the presentation, and I'll be doing the second part. So basically, as Wyatt said, we're here to get your feedback and guidance as we prepare the comp plan for 2018, and so we don't have anything in mind as of yet. We're just out in the community trying to get feedback on which direction we should go. We're trying to match the city's vision. We have a housing survey that's online now. We had a community forum last week that was, and we have a second one planned. We have a groundbreaking this Friday for the new group home, Miller House. We have a lot going on, so we're really excited. So just, so we'll go ahead and pass it to Alex.
Welcome. Welcome back.
Thank you. So before we start, first of all, I want to draw attention to, throughout this comprehensive plan process, we're talking about more than just housing. When we're talking about housing, we're also talking about a lot of other aspects of this community that are impacted by housing. For example, transportation. With the economic hub of Washington DC right here, the less affordable it is to live closer to the city, the further you have to move into the fringe suburban communities, and that means there's going to be more traffic congestion coming through the city, more wear and tear on our roads. For health and education, pretty simply, the more that you're going to be spending on housing needs, the less disposable income you'll have for things like savings, retirement, healthcare and education. This will cause families to become economically vulnerable in the short term and the long run. And then also economic impact. One recent study that was just done on transportation and housing in Northern Virginia said that the shortage of accessible housing is having a negative impact on retaining qualified entry-level and mid-level employees, and it's contributing to some level of employee turnover due to long commutes. Also, the less money you have because you're spending on housing, the less you can spend at local businesses. So for this presentation, I'll talk about the trends in the region and the city, and then I'll pass it off to Dana, who will talk about the progress against the goals, and then we'll have a question and answer after. So the median age of Falls Church City fell from 40.4 to 38.9 between 2010 and 2016. There was an increase in families by 18%, whereas there was 11% in Fairfax and Arlington. The amount of young people in the city grew substantially. In just six years, it grew 12%, where there was a 6% increase of ages 55 to 64. The percentage of the population with a postgraduate degree increased from 15 to 29, so it nearly doubled in just 16 years. And then it's because families that moved to the City of Falls Church in the early 2000s now have college-age children, and baby boomers continue to age in place. So this chart looks at the income change in the city between 2010 and 2016, those two years. So, or yeah, 2000, 2016, basically houses that, households that made over $200,000 almost tripled in the city, whereas households earning under $100,000 fell almost 53%. Although that is a lot, the county, our neighboring counties, Arlington and Fairfax, saw similar increases. So the average home sales price has almost doubled, or doubled, more than doubled in most cases in 2000, for Falls Church especially. Just since 2010, detached home is 130% of the price it was then. In 2002, the first million-dollar residential property was sold in Falls Church. By 2014, one out of every five properties sold for over a million, and on my one block, there's three going up right now that all go for over a million. In 2013 alone, 16% of the homes in the city were sold for cash. So there's become this homeownership affordability gap. So the green line is the median sold home prices and 100% AMI, or the median income for the Washington area, is what you can afford. As you can see, especially since 2012, the gap has been exasperated, and it's harder for people who make the median income to buy what the median house is here. So although a lot of just, all of Northern Virginia in this area is seeing this problem, Falls Church does have an affordability problem that is much more, much higher than all the other neighboring jurisdictions like Arlington, Fairfax City, Fairfax County, and Alexandria. As you can see, our line is quite higher than the others. So to put this a little bit more in perspective for the Falls Church resident, the Department of Housing and Urban Development considers people that pay 30% or more of their monthly income towards housing costs to be cost-burdened. In the city, 38% of renters are cost-burdened, and 25% of homeowners are cost-burdened. And since 2010, the median monthly rent in the city has increased 8% in eight years. So a direct example for our city, the, looking at the four newest developments, North Gate, Pearson, West Broad, and Lincoln at Tanner Hill, it's currently unaffordable to live there if you're earning below 90% of the area median income. So for a person who had a one-bedroom apartment at Pearson Square, it'd be $1,700 a month, but it's unaffordable to them if they make 90% of the median income. So these prices of homes and how wages have somewhat become stagnant begs the question who can live in this inclusive community that has been set out in our vision, our 2040 vision. This chart on the PowerPoint shows some, the mean salary of many essential professions such as mental health counselors, construction laborers, teachers, and with these wages, are they really able to live in Falls Church? So right before I give it to Dana, I'll leave you with a couple of future projections. The City of Falls Church grew 5.2% from July 1st, 2016 to July 1st, 2017. That was the most out of any US county with more than 10,000 residents in America. So it's growing quick. By 2040, half of Virginia will live in the Northern Virginia area, and it's already at 8.5 million as a state right now. So as the population climbs dramatically, the affordability gap is continuing to grow, and wages are somewhat stagnant. In a recent report, high housing costs, and particularly rental housing costs, were cited as a contributor to the Washington region's declining economic brand. And I'll let Dana go to goals.
Okay, so now that, now that Alex gave you the background of why housing is important and, you know, what the need is, in 2005, that was when we did our last comp plan, and so we need to update that. And so at that time, these are the goals that we came up with, and then I'm just going to kind of give you background of where we are now, the progress that we've made since 2005 on each of these goals. And then I'm going to talk about in 2017, when the city adopted a new vision statement, we kind of took a look at these old goals and kind of updated them to coincide with the new vision. But in 2005, our first goal was to encourage the preservation and improvement of the city's existing housing stock. So if you look at this, for market rate rental units, in 2012, we had 224 units. In 2017, we had 111 units. And so looking at the affordable housing policy, our goal was to preserve 224 units through 2022. So that was 20 years from when that was adopted in 2013. And then we want to preserve the current stock of affordable committed rental units. And so in 2012, we had 221 rental units, committed rental units, and in 2017, we had 264 units, and that's because of the four new properties that came online, Pearson Square, North Gate, Lincoln at Tanner Hill, and West Broad residences. And then we also look to preserve the current stock of affordable owned units. And so we had 25 ADU homeownership units, and in 2017, that's, we've lost three, so we're down to 21 because the covenants ran out, and we're going to see more of that in the future, unfortunately. So that's 470 total affordable units, and so in 2017, the stock is 398. And so that includes three properties that are no longer affordable. That's Merrill House, Broad Falls, and Lee Square. So that just kind of gives you a snapshot of where we are. And as far as preserving, I mean, improving the city's existing housing stock, we get CDBG funds that we use for housing rehabilitation at Winter Hill. We're improving the property over there. We also make referrals for people to improve their property if they need a ramp, or if they need any other type of improvement for their home. And then we also, and the special zoning exception ordinance allowed for ADU creation, and so that's what allowed for ADU creation. Our second goal at the time was to encourage a mix of residential housing types that can meet the current and future needs of residents at all levels of income while benefiting the community character. And so we've done really well with that. Numerous rental developments have been constructed since 2005, and that's all housing, and that includes those properties that I talked about. It also includes the spectrum. And so, and the city negotiated for affordable dwelling units in all redeveloped sites. And then we also include Reed along with that, the Reed Building, which includes nine teacher workforce units. Developers have contributed over $500,000 to the Affordable Housing Fund, which is down to about $300,000. We would like for that to grow. Our third goal was to encourage the creative preservation, construction, and rehabilitation of housing. And we're excited that no units have been lost to condominium conversion, which was a concern at the time Pearson Square was built. We thought we might lose those when they became ADUs. Tax and rent relief has expanded. 5.7% of all the units in the city are committed, affordable to persons with households of 80, that do not exceed 80%. So that's 48 ADUs. And then we have six workforce units, and those are all at West Broad residences, and those are for households where their income is between 80 and 110% of AMI. So we have, so we're trying to meet the needs of all incomes. We also have partnership with nonprofits, Home Stretch, The Housing Corporation, and Homeless Shelter. We receive housing funds through federal HUD, and we use those for housing as well. Then we also get, we partner with Fairfax County for the Housing Choice Voucher Program, so city residents would go through Fairfax County to get those. The majority of the residents at Winter Hill have vouchers that were issued through Fairfax County, and they were city residents. And then we also, the city has, has a senior cottage ordinance that was used this year. The fourth goal was to continue to create supportive and affordable housing for special needs populations. The city transferred land to community residences to build a group home. Super excited about that. 2019, that is slated to open. Reminding you to come on Friday again, 8 to 8:30. The city negotiated with Kensington Assisted Living for a housing subsidy, which allows persons who are seniors or disabled to live there. We currently, so we served two persons at Kensington when that was built, with that subsidy. We also have a partnership with Sunrise Assisted Living that allows for 18 persons, and it was 18 beds for low to moderate incomes that can live at Sunrise. So we do that as well. The fifth goal was to require the provision of fair and equal housing opportunities in the city. And so with that one, we have biannual fair housing sessions for all the property managers in the city. We also have a session for elected public officials. We coordinate meetings between landlords and tenants. We did this at Broad Falls. There was an issue when they raised the rents there, and there were needed improvements, and so we kind of facilitated that. And then we also work with Fairfax County and the Health Department there for property maintenance and code concerns. If there's a hoarding issue or that type of thing, then that group would work with that. And then we have biannual housing, fair housing testing on all the rental properties in the city. We just concluded that, and there were no findings this year. And so I talked about that 2017 update that we did to try to make our goals be more in line with the city's 2040 vision. So briefly, I'll go through what those updated goals were. So the first goal was to preserve, create, and promote affordable living for residents at all levels of income, especially for lower-income residents. And so the first thing we want to do is maximize revenue for the Affordable Housing Fund. We haven't had a contribution in a long time, and so we are exploring cash and loot. The Affordable Housing Policy is being updated, and that is something that the work group would really like to see happen, so we can have more funds to do a larger-scale project. We also want to preserve market rate affordable rents because we're losing those. We want to provide referrals for home rehab assistance, more of those. Like I said, this year, there was rent and tax relief expansion, so that's a good thing. We want to prepare a zoning amendment, amendment for zoning changes for accessory dwelling units. Currently, there is, accessory dwelling units are allowed, but they have to be attached to a household or attached to the garage, and we would like for it to be so you could have something that's standalone. And so that's something that we would like to explore, and granny flats as well. And then we also have partnered with other localities to advocate for legislation. This year, we partnered with all of the Northern Virginia localities so that we could make housing choice vouchers, something that has to be accepted by landlords. That's a big problem in Falls Church. Housing choice vouchers are not accepted in any property in the city except for the Fields and Winter Hill and the ADU program. The presidents have been grandfathered in, but no new vouchers are being accepted, and all the localities having the same problem. But in Maryland, they have, in Montgomery County, property owners have to accept vouchers. It's law there, and that's what we were really trying to do in Virginia, but didn't pass, so we'll try again next year. Our second updated goal was to protect and support affordable living for the disabled, the elderly, and other special needs populations. And so we want to encourage affordable property to be built on the George Mason site. We'd like to see ADUs at lower incomes. Currently, we are serving, I talked about those units that were for persons that were up to 80% of AMI, and then we have some that are workforce for 80 to 120. But what we don't have is units for persons that are at 40% in those lower income levels, and that would be persons like if you are waitress, or you work at CVS, you're not going to be able to qualify for our ADU program. And so we need, that's a niche, I mean, that's housing that is not anywhere in the city except for Winter Hill. That's it. And so we would like to see ADU... And so, we would like to see ADUs for lower incomes, and we might have to receive less ADUs if we serve that population, and we're okay with that. We'd also like to allow quads through zoning. We are updating the Affordable Housing Policy. We hope to have something for you in next month, and so, we're almost done with that process. And we have a city committed affordable unit program, where we have one unit that's serving a household at 40% of AMI, and we use city funds to have that one property. We'd like to expand that. We have lots of interest in that unit, but we can only serve one person with the funds that we have. And we also would like to reestablish down payment and closing cost assistance, because that was a really popular program and allowed persons to be able to purchase their first home in the city. And our last goal was to encourage a multitude of residential living types in the city of Falls Church in order to meet the needs of the diverse community. And so, we want to have different types of housing in the city. We supported the cottage properties. We talked about the subsidy for seniors and disabled persons. We are in support of the age-restricted units at Founder's Row. We have people come and tell us that's a need. They may not be affordable, but that's a need in the city. And then, we are advocating for housing diversity. So that means single-family homes, condos. Do we need to have more condos in the city? And apartments. Do we have enough rental? Is that something that we have? And then, we want to enverge developer creativity, and with that, we want to look at things like, for example, if we want, if we can't have the numbers of affordable housing that we need in the city, perhaps it could be built off-site. With the group home, we have an apartment along with the four units that are for persons that have high needs, and that person can live there with the other four persons. They don't have a need for services, but it's a way to get affordable housing into the city. So we want to be creative, and whatever, you know, we're encouraging developers to come to us with ideas. So, discussion questions. We talked about fair and equal housing opportunities for the city, so that's not going to change. So, discussion questions for you, and the guidance that we're looking for you all to tell us is, does the city's vision, which calls for inclusiveness and social sustainability, match the community's future needs for housing? Secondly, is the city talking about the right goals for the city's housing stock? And third, are these the kind of actions that council wants to pursue? So we need your guidance to look at all housing for the city. What's our direction? Where do we want to go? And what is your guidance on that?
Can I just add one thing before we start? Just one minor correction?
Sure.
And there was recently a contribution made to the Affordable Housing Fund, $10,000 from Bob Young's group as part of the cottage project.
That's right. So I just wanted to make sure about that. Thank you, Bob Young. Really appreciate that.
Well, thank you all for the good work you've done, and we welcome you, Alex. Thanks for coming back to the community. You did a great presentation. Questions, discussions, comments? Does anyone have anything they want to start? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Before I start, I just wanted to recognize that Brenda Heffernan, who is the Chair of our Housing Commission, is actually in the audience with us. Thank you for joining us tonight, Brenda. So, thank you for this. This is a great topic. I think it's not only just like a housing topic. I think in general, housing is just a values, cultural, economic development issue. It all ties together, so I think Alex did a great job at the beginning, talking about why it matters and how it relates to things like transportation, which we often hear complaints about, and why having more housing is important. Before jumping into the actual housing content, one of the questions I actually just been thinking about is, thinking about our population. I actually read a report that Arlington came out with recently, where they were expecting their population to grow 22,000 between the years 2020 and 2040, and they expect their housing units to grow 24,000. So, more, slightly more housing units than population. I was wondering whether we have similar projection growth for our population and match that with our housing. So even before jumping into what type of housing do we want, I guess a more fundamental question is, do we have enough housing for what we think our population may need? And then, we can talk about, okay, based on that, what's the composition of it, right? Do we want more apartments, more house, single-family houses? Do we want granny flats? But I thought that was kind of an interesting way to kind of think about making sure that we have enough supply, because I think some of the price issues, like going back to Econ 101, price is going up because you don't have enough supply. And so, if you have more supply, do prices come down, both in ownership and rental prices? So more of a fundamental question that we probably can go do more research on. But anecdotally, I do hear that, you know, the reason why I think a lot of us care about it is because, number one, it's a cultural and social values issue, but I think it's also an economic development issue. Anecdotally, we've heard that, you know, people have a hard time hiring waitstaff because people can't afford to live close in, and they don't want to drive an hour and a half away to make $10 an hour in the city. So I think this is something that we all should care about, both from our business owners to all those people in the community. Out of all the, I guess, priorities, the things that I care a lot about is actually the Affordable Housing Fund, because I think that is where we can actually get a lot more leverage. I know that it sounds like it was depleted from about 500,000 to maybe 300 recently, and we had used the 200, I think, to help with down payment assistance. Is that right? Did I remember that?
I can't remember the amount, but we used the majority.
Use it with down payment assistance. I think which is great to help, you know, people kind of get started in their homes. I don't know how many people we actually helped that way.
I think it was about, it was between five and seven that purchased.
Which is great. I'm glad that we, you know, were able to help people get their first start in owning a home. I think as a general philosophy, I feel like if we can figure out how to boost those funds and use those funds a better scale and help more people, whether that's a bigger project, you know, whether it's preserving an affordable housing project, or getting started on a new one, that's where I'd like to see a lot more attention, is boosting the Affordable Housing Fund, whether that's in cash in lieu of conversion or contributions elsewhere. Because I do think that we can do a lot more. I think the 6%, and you guys will probably come up with that soon, is that the 6% is simply not going to be enough, right? We just can't, you showed us those numbers about where our units were. We can't kind of build our way out of that, you know, that crunch that we're in right now. And so, I think that's where the Affordable Housing Fund will be really important for us. So that's where I would like to see a lot more of the focus. My second question is, the regional approach? I think Alex has shown data that clearly, while our prices have gone up a lot in Falls Church, we are clearly not alone in this. Everyone's prices have gone up a lot, and we are all facing a similar issue. And while everyone has their own approaches, I wonder where we can learn from other people, what they can do, or if there's even joint projects we could consider with our neighbors. I'd love to know how they're tackling this. We obviously have a lot less land, and so, we're going to be more constrained in solutions, but I feel like let's not reinvent the wheel, because I think Arlington and Fairfax and Alexandria may have some solutions. But this is all exciting stuff, and I appreciate you guys getting the conversation started. Thank you.
And I just wanted to remind you, we will be back next month with the Affordable Housing Policy update.
All right. Who else has got questions? Mr. Duncan, you look pensive.
Thank you. So whenever we talk about this topic, I find myself speaking more to the six of you folks than to anybody in the audience. By definition, affordable housing, by and large, is meeting the needs of a constituency that we don't yet have. So it's not like you're going to have people coming here, you know, asking for traffic coming for their neighborhood, or better schools, or they do want a building, or they don't want a building. We are trying to provide places to live for people who are not here yet. And so, it really does, as Ms. Hardy said, go to kind of your, your values and where you see affordable housing in your, you know, priorities for your community. It's, it's something that usually is portrayed as something we're doing for somebody else, right? But really, as Mr. McMillan started out, it's something that we're doing for ourselves. We're trying to create homes for people who work here so that they might be able to walk to work rather than commute and clog our streets. We're trying to create, you know, diversity in families so that our children go to school in a community that is, you know, more like America and less like a little bubble. I hope as we talk about this topic for the next several weeks, that we'll keep that in mind, that, that this is something we, we are doing to enhance the value of the community for ourselves, not just something we're doing to help people who have not moved in here yet. The kind of specific, well, one other thought about that. Looking at the documents here, struck me that when the Affordable Housing Policy was last done, was 2013. And I thought, wow, that's a long time ago. I turned the page and realized my name is on the list of members of City Council in 2013. But what's interesting is that Mr. Snyder, Mr. Tartar, and Mr. Duncan are the only three members who were on the council then, who are still on the council now. And so, we really have it, I think, within ourselves to, you know, create this body of work anew. And I think we have done a lot. We maybe don't give ourselves as much credit as we should over the last five years in a lot of the areas that she identified, in, you know, building the buildings that have units that are dedicated affordability, and building the, you know, different buildings for, or different projects for, you know, different needs groups, the Kensington, the Miller House, cottages. You know, we really have done a fair amount of good work in the area of affordable and diversity of housing stock. And so, I think, I hope that we have it within ourselves to continue that. Just two specific things to start out that are on my mind, or maybe three. One, we need a good formula for cash in lieu of, because we just haven't done that in so long, I have no idea what the number is. If somebody wants to come here and build a condominium project, you know, maybe rather than take the luxury condominium, you know, two or three units out of that building, what would a, what would a cash in lieu of number be that would be, you know, reasonable in perpetuity? Now, that's another thing, by the way. I don't believe you mentioned that the last couple of projects, we've gotten a, in perpetuity for ADUs, which is, that's possibly one of the two or three most significant things I expect that I will have done in the time that I've served here, you know, moving from 25 or 30 years to perpetuity. So, first, cash in lieu of, good calculation, whatever the jurisdiction is doing. Two, we got to figure out a way to save the Fields, right? Because that's just a big number. And as you said, with Merrill House, and, and Broad Falls, and Lee Square, those have evolved. They're not unaffordable, but they have moved off the, certainly of the 60% AMI affordability chart, and they're probably, I don't know where they are exactly right now, but we need to hold on to the Fields. So working with Wesley or some other group to make that happen has got to be a very top priority. And as I've said, and finally, last, up the West End on the Economic Development Project that we do up there, is just a golden opportunity to, you know, make a real, significant step forward in a project that has dedicated, a significant number of dedicated units. You know, dedicated affordable housing has some detractors and some supporters. Detractors point to, you know, communities that look nice when they're built, but they don't hold up over the years, and they end up not performing very well. That, that has happened. I'd like the city to challenge itself to try to do dedicated affordable housing the right way, and to sustain its quality, and, and over, you know, many decades, provide a good place for people to live who are of modest income, as we have done at Winter Hill. I mean, I don't think, again, we give ourselves enough credit for, right in the heart of the city of Falls Church, we have a dedicated affordable housing community, which everybody agrees is very well-run and, and brings, keeps people here who really, you know, are an important part of our city, who otherwise would simply not be able to live here. So, I'd like to see us up at the West End, challenge ourselves to create another community like that, with all the housing that's going to go in up there. And we know it's going to be a big number. It's going to be 1,000 units probably. We need to do, you know, a number that means something in terms of affordability up there. All right. That's all for now. Thanks.
All right. Other folks? Mr. Lichtenhouse, and then Mr. Snyder?
Dana, Alex, Nancy, I just want to thank you guys, and I probably speak for Ms. Connolly as well, who's also serving on the Affordable Housing Policy Work Group with me, that you guys have done a phenomenal job. And for me personally, as a newcomer to council, and certainly a newcomer to the policy working group, it was enlightening. A lot of the statistics that Alex talked about today, and a lot of the data that we reviewed. The one thing that I want to make sure doesn't get lost in this conversation for folks that hear the word affordable housing, and affordable housing policy, because that can mean different things to many different people, is that included in this, when you talk about a diversified housing stock, when you talk about social sustainability and inclusiveness, is that this is also workforce housing. So this is teachers, this is folks, fire department, police officers, folks that work for the city, that we depend upon, that blood, sweat, and tear toil for the community. And so, I think it's important that, that we not lose sight of that. And that's not just a statement to you, because I know that's preaching to the choir, but it's important for folks to know that it's not just affordable housing, that this is workforce housing for the folks that serve the community. I do want to echo a couple of things, I think, that have been touched on here. One, something that's important to me, and I know we've, we've touched on all of this at length and ad nauseam within those working group meetings, but I do want to stress a couple of things. One, looking outside of the jurisdiction, and not just looking to what they do, but also looking to partner with other jurisdictions to help solve these problems, as Ms. Hardy alluded. We are landlocked to some extent. We've got 2.2 square miles, and to some extent, when you look to build your way out of this issue, or you look to seed a fund to help acquire and operate, as we've talked about with the Fields, we only have so much to work with, and I think that it's important that we look to neighboring jurisdictions to be able to partner, partner with them, to be able to expand and leverage some of our efforts and money, and desires, and values here. And then, finally, one thing that I would like to see information on, again, I know we've touched on this briefly in those policy working groups, are buying assistance, first time home buyer tax credits, loans. I do want to be sensitive to oversight and operation, and the folks that would potentially work within your department, as well as with the city, that would have to oversee those. You don't want it to be become, to become burdensome, but I think that those types of first home buyer programs can be very helpful. If someone that bought their first home in downtown DC and took advantage of that, it does make a difference. And I think that goes directly to Mr. Duncan's comment about looking for affordable and workforce housing for the future, not for today. And I see a younger generation, as you had alluded to, when you look at the median age drop here, that we need to be prepared for that. And I think that, that first time home buyer assistance program will be very helpful. So, again, thank you guys very much for, for your time.
All right. Mr. Snyder?
So, thank you for this. And I guess my name was on virtually every prior housing policy since the mid-'90s, so hopefully, my commitment to that's been consistent, and I want to remain consistent with it. So, a couple of things occur to me. The first is, this question about, is this a zero-sum game? In other words, to make housing more affordable for some, do we have to make it more unaffordable for others? And so, I'm interested in what research is being done out there that can explode the myth, if you will, that basically what government is engaged here is simply income redistribution. The tax rates go up for some people in order to make affordable housing for other people. And so, this notion about it being an economic development thing, I think that sounds great. I'd like to see some research behind it, and there may very well be, but I think that's, that's important, because if, if we're really going to set ambitious goals, and we really want to meet those goals, we're going to have to make some changes, and we're going to have to respond to people by saying, I'm a senior, I'm paying the region's highest taxes, which is true, the highest tax rate. I don't have kids in the schools anymore, and my taxes are up in order to artificially bring people into this community to subsidize them. And we hear it every time we go around during the election season. So if we're going to effectively establish goals, which I totally agree with, which are more ambitious, and we actually want to achieve those goals, which I also agree with, then we've got to make that case more strongly to more people than we've made it in the past. Not necessarily to me, but to the public out there that's paying taxes that says, I'm nearly taxed out of my home, and yet, we want to pay more to bring other people in to subsidize them. Now, I think you can make a strong case that, that it's not a zero-sum game, but I don't think it's been effectively made yet, number one. Number two, your PowerPoint presentation is good, but it was long on the slide that says we haven't met our goals, and almost nothing that talks about what our programs were. So just a suggestion, I liked your narrative, because it does say, we've made a good faith effort. We've sometimes fallen short. We need to do more. All that's a given. But it sounds like, well, we set these policies, we haven't achieved them, and we're really no good, or whatever. So, I think your narrative was very helpful in explaining the different sorts of creative ways. The third issue, I think we all agree, we need small condos for people to begin to build equity, to move up the ladder, and for seniors. And yet, housing, yet, project after project comes into the city, and it's 100% apartments. When are we going to say, we're not going to take your project if it's 100% apartments? And we've got some projects now that are in front of us. Are we going to say that we're serious about affordable housing? Are we serious about condos? Are we serious about condos? And say to the next developer that comes in, "We want some condos in there, because that's a housing type that we need and we're committed to doing it." We have the capability of doing that now. And yet, every major project that's come through here in the last three or four years, it's 100% apartments. And we know why that is, because that's where the cheap money is. But when are we going to collectively make the decision that we're serious about this and we're going to force developers to build what we need, not just what gives them the maximum amount of money? So, that would be another major point. Finally, I don't want to telegraph ahead to the developers on what's supposed to be the commercial part of the high school site, any particular number of housing units. In my view, this is a shot for major commercial development. And the great fear I have is that the commercial development goes on the metro site and we end up with the housing units and fit into the larger unfair context of school funding, where we, we, we are taxed and the money goes everywhere else. It's a different-ish financial issue than it is for almost any other jurisdiction, because you can't create a lot of public safe service costs and then offload them to a larger jurisdiction. So, I keep struggling with what looks like a great policy on paper and works everywhere else, where you don't have this bizarre state-funding, local composite index thing that constantly acts against us and very few other jurisdictions. By the way, the most progressive jurisdictions in the state, isn't that an accident? That we missed, we've got to constantly keep that in mind, which goes to this zero-sum game. So, I really want to make the case more strongly than we've been able to make it to the past, to everybody in the community, not just those who agree with it in theory, but those who say, "I don't understand why my taxes are so high in order to make them lower for somebody else." We need to make that case, and I want to make that case, so we can meet these goals. But I also would challenge all of us, we have development projects right now in front of us where we can push for condos if we have the will to do it. Thanks much.
All right, thank you very much. Anyone else have anything? Vice Mayor Connolly, yes.
Thanks for your presentation. I have a couple of things, as I went through your staff report. The first one kind of goes to what Mr. Snyder just said in lines 101, you say, "We've achieved significant progress against the adopted goals." As I read it, I thought, "We've actually achieved mixed, we've achieved some significant progress, but as you said in your presentation, it's not all significant." So, maybe that should really say, "Mixed progress," or "Significant progress in some areas and need to work on others?" Because that seems more like what the actual scenario is. Further down on 119, one of the goals was to, and I'm just wondering if we've ever done this with the mixed-use development, allow for an up to 20% increase in density in exchange for 12% being designated as affordable. Has that ever happened, Mr. Shields?
And part of the difficulty is, we don't really, we don't zone by FAR. So, density transfers or density bonuses is not a construct that works with the zoning tools that we use in the city.
That's something, they do that in Arlington or other places?
That's correct. I think part of the work that we're doing is trying to assess how our negotiations are relative to all of the other jurisdictions. And I think that's a report that we'll be bringing to council soon.
Okay. So, is that something that we think might stay in there for next time, or it might change as we go forward, depending on?
Well, the ordinance was adopted, you know, this is the ordinance that's on the books, it's just, we don't use it.
Right, right. But as we do our new ordinance, will we, you think we might change that, keep that in there? Or is that something that's on the table to be discussed?
I don't know.
Is it something we need to address, going into the new ordinance?
So, what we're going to be talking about is a new affordable, or we're calling Affordable Living Policy, which is different from the zoning ordinance. So, the zoning ordinance that initially established the affordable dwelling unit program in the city was based...
Sorry, there's a plug in my hair.
Mr. Duncan, he'll take care of it for you.
Yeah. That's flying away. We just stunned it.
I got a bug in my house.
So, anyway, the, the zoning ordinance that was initially created to, to establish this program, as Mr. Searle said, was based on something that is not really usable. So, that, so, we're working on an affordable living policy, the zoning ordinance change will be a, a separate process. So, that's not the process that we're talking about here. That's, that's something that could be further down the road to, to make that, the zoning code in line with what the policy will be.
Okay. Then, just walk me through this a little further.
Okay.
We've got the Affordable Living Policy. We also have the comp, the chapter in the comp plan, that's different, right, than the Affordable Living Policy?
Right.
Which is different than the zoning ordinance.
Right.
So, it's three separate things.
Three separate things.
But they inform one another.
Correct.
Okay. So, if we wanted to change this or update that, we would, that would be a zoning thing, not a comp plan thing, or an affordable housing policy thing?
Correct.
Okay.
The, the zoning ordinance as a zoning code would be a zoning code change, I would have to go through that process.
Okay, I think I get that. But I'll ask more questions on that. I need to get my paper, my notes, hold on.
Uh-oh. We can get it this way.
That was a little dramatic, sorry. Just crawling in my hair. All right, so, then on to the affordable housing units, the rentals versus the ownership ones. So, I've heard, and I don't know if other council members have heard, concerns about how we've done the affordable units for purchase, condos and townhouses and Reese Place and Whittier and others, and how that's enforced. Is that something that is taken up, I know it's not policy, it's more practice?
What do you, what do you mean, how it's enforced?
Well, like Reese Place, when, those are the ones that are coming off. So, basically, the four or five people that bought those condos hit the lottery, because those condos have appreciated so much. Is there a way, as we write this new policy, to say, you know, "We'd love to help people buy homes, but then when you sell your home and get your giant payoff, that some of the money has to go back into the Affordable Housing Fund"?
Our, our newer policy, our newer covenants are written that way, but those were some of the first homeownership ADUs that we had. And so, there was nothing that allowed us to recapture it once they got past the covenant period. But the newer covenants, they would have to share some of that gain with the city.
Okay.
This was, like, the Whittier was the very first ADU homeownerships in the city, and, and I wasn't here, so it's not my fault. No, just kidding. Just kidding.
Only Mr. Snyder was here, I think.
But, but we've worked closely with Carol, there's nothing we can do. We tried everything, and there's just nothing we can do past the covenant period, but we're going to fix that.
So, at, if indeed we end up with condos and some of them are affordable, there'll be a way to, and I think the same, same thing should happen with them, down payment assistance. If we're going to give people down payment assistance and then they sell their house for three times the value years later, there should be some...
Now, they do have to pay a portion back.
A portion of it back, right. But maybe they should have to pay all of it back if they're making a lot of money. So, that's just one of those things that comes up and people ask, and I never have the right answer for that, or exactly how that happens. So, thank you on that. The housing choice vouchers, did I see something on social media that those were open recently?
Now, that's another housing program, it's called RAD, and that is public housing in Fairfax County. It's not the Housing Choice Voucher Program. It's not a voucher, it's actual properties. So, they opened their waitlist last Monday, I think it was open for about two hours, and I don't even know the number of people that applied, and then they had to close it again.
Okay. But that was one that Falls Church residents were eligible to apply for?
Yes, yes.
Do we know if any of them did, any of our people did?
I don't know who, I know they had, like, thousands of people applying within those two hours, so I'm not sure how many.
And then how, so that waiting list will last for years now? Because it only opens every few years?
Yes.
Presumably it'll be for many years.
Right, right. Okay. And then you mentioned the, we were working with...
...other localities to advocate for a change to require properties to accept housing choice vouchers.
Yes.
Is that something, Ms. Mester, that was on our legislative agenda last year?
It wasn't in the legislative program, it developed separately with the regional initiative, but it's something that council could add in the future, since they're going to go back.
Could we add that? Could we add that? Because then that would be something that we would be able to advocate for as well.
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, is there anything else? Any other questions, comments? Mr. Z?
Just one, I know that we've spent a lot of time on this already, and there are other things to get to, which is that even though it was council-initiated, I think that it would be wise for, in the context of the staff report and presentation going forward, that you take full credit for ensuring that the term for proffers for affordable units continue into perpetuity. I don't see that listed here anywhere.
I'll make sure to add it.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's huge.
It is.
And furthermore, you should, because what, people want to see victories along the way. You should characterize how large that impact is. Thank you.
Just one more question to follow along what Mr. Snyder said. On line 88, 87, 88, 89 in the staff report, there's a reference to a Caruthers and Olferson study. I'm not really sure I understand what that sentence means, so maybe you could give us a little more detail in the next iteration. Find that, the study found that density of developed land reduces local government spending. Not sure I understand exactly what that means.
Um, yeah, that basically just means that, might be missing a word there, that the higher density that there is, local government costs go down.
Yeah, that's, that's a, that is, I would like to believe that, I very much want to believe that. If, if we're going to hang our hat on that, let's put a little bit more information out about that, because that goes partly to what Mr. Snyder's saying. And basically, we're saying, if we do more dense development, public service costs are spread over a larger number of people, and that is more manageable, number one. And number two, maybe there are some economies of scale that we gain by being a larger little city than the little, little city that we used to be. So, that's, that's a fertile area for some more information to try to make the argument for what we're all talking about here. Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you all. Unless anyone else has got any further comments, we do have a lot on the agenda left to go. Thank you again for your great work, and I look forward to hearing more from you all. All right, Mr. Shields, we're on to the CIP quarterly update. Let's say you.
So, council, we have two items that have a ton of information in them, and so I think we want to summarize them both. We have a quarterly update for the CIP, which we do each three months, and as a new thing, a update on the council work plan, which will be done on a three-month basis as well. I had just suggested to Ms. Mester, maybe we hit the top three of accomplishments on the CIP, and maybe three that are worthy of note because there's a delay or an issue that we're working through, just as an update for the council. And then take any questions on that, and then similarly, I'll do the same on the work plan.
To you, council, I'm pleased to be able to provide the CIP update. Before I jump into the snapshot, I would just like to highlight from the staff report, two categories that we provided for you as part of this update as well. One, at line 17, we've provided an update of all the grants that have been awarded to the city since you adopted the CIP, where they were just proposed and approved, specific grant applications. We just thought it'd be nice to give you a consolidated report. So, you'll see all of that funding outlined there, including the 5.7 million NVTA recent 70% funding award. I do want to highlight that in this grant award, you'll see different fiscal years. So, we are filling out that first six-year period so that we can keep a robust infrastructure improvement program going. This is also the result of the state shifting to every other year, grant awards and funding in the out-years, and it'll help us plan out resource needs and staffing needs as well. Also, I had received a few questions from council and the community of sort of how our stormwater programs were going as it relates to the original watershed management plan. And while the snapshot highlighted a few stormwater updates, took an opportunity within this memo cover sheet at line 40 to give you an update on the watershed management plan that was adopted in 2012. And over the last five years, nine of the 10 top priority projects, based on that scoring system that was adopted by council within that plan, have been worked. And then we've continued to do monitoring and updates. And so, some of the original projects were low priorities, and we identified additional ones that were higher priority based on that criteria. So, there has been some ebb and flow with the projects below the 10th one, and so we outlined, for example, the Ren Branch and Lincoln Avenue and Staples Chase being prioritized because of flooding. So, I just wanted to give an update on the status on where we are at a high level with the watershed management plan. As it relates to the snapshot, we have 29 active projects. One is completed, which was the primary extensions. We have the majority in green, a lot of good work in progress. And so that, you can see, for example, the Beerman Park Daylighting and the Cherry Hill Park and the playground. The trail for the ADA accessibility from the handicap parking to the barn and over the playground started last week, and if you were at the concert in the park Thursday, you could see a lot of disturbed dirt as we're putting in the ADA accessible path. We've done some project updates on the library and city hall, so I won't highlight that. This evening, we are, of course, open for discussion on those. The stormwater ones, we have three projects listed here. The Ren Branch one that I just mentioned is a new one that was added to the watershed management issues based on the criteria. We actually have a lot of utility conflicts, and so that's why that one is showing yellow right now, because we had to delay actual construction completion while we do some redesign and utility relocation. Firearms Training Center is progressing well, and is on schedule to be completed this fall. And we are working closely with Arlington on the procurement for the HVAC. The bids came in high. To your point earlier on the library discussion, as construction costs are going up, we saw escalation on that one. And so what we're working on, similar with the library, looking at phasing, because if we can make the building more available while still running services out of there, which is taking a little coordination with our career and volunteers, but we will achieve that, we will get that project done. And we have a whole lot of transportation projects underway and happening. And so, the one I'll highlight is this Saturday, we opened Van Buren Bridge to foot and vehicle traffic, and we are working to schedule with council schedule and OCOM, a ground breaking, a ribbon cutting, so we can celebrate a multi-funding source bridge repair...
It's time for the shores bridge.
...that has a good stormwater underpinning now, good piers, and the pedestrian walkway is now securely funded. And this one, as you will remember, does have some NVTA funding in it that was 70%. So, that I'll do as a highlight for the CIP and be glad to answer any more specific questions or get you more additional follow-up information.
All right, thank you very much. Questions? We have several. Who wants to go first here? All right, Mr. Z, why don't you go?
Sure, thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say that I've been hearing nothing but great comments from the neighbors that live on Pennsylvania Avenue, the fact that you've closed down one lane of traffic, basically making this a one-way street with your lay-down. I think they'd be really happy if you used Pennsylvania for all your lay-down projects for the rest of the city going forward.
It's, it's a little bit similar to the Van Buren Bridge. I think the neighbors are really happy with that bridge being closed.
They love it. The traffic has dropped by 70%. The kids ride their bikes in the street, maybe not a good idea for them, but I'm not going to suggest otherwise. It's got much more quiet. The, but all, in all seriousness, the, we all received a letter, I believe, recently with regard to a request to utilize stormwater funds to finish off the part of the Big Chilene Park. And I think the ask was, or about a quarter of a million dollars. And I'm just wondering where that is in the, in the, in the recommendation and study process.
Well, what our first approach is, is to try to bring this project within the budget and not exceed the budget. The request for additional funding from the stormwater fund, that's, has been discussed at the staff level. The stormwater fund is not flush with cash. The money's not just sitting there. It is programmed for flood mitigation and water quality projects. So, I think what we'll need to do is get back with the council on an update as to that project's status, its budget, and what some of the trade-offs are, and what some of the solutions might be if, if the council doesn't want to make some reductions in scope to keep it within budget.
That's an excellent answer. Thank you.
All right, who else? Ms. Hardy?
Before we leave that one, I guess I'd like to know, given that the argument I've heard from the Wreckin' Parks Board is because they've spent, or they plan to spend a large part of their project money on stormwater improvements, is how the stormwater improvements they do there stack up against the 10 projects from that 2012 watershed plan?
The Big Chimneys is in the full watershed management plan. And when you apply the criteria that council adopted to do the highest priorities for the spreading out your money, this project and all parks come low, because you're not flooding residential or commercial areas, and it's a naturally open, pervious surface. So, it is in there, but it would be ranked low, or is currently ranked low.
Yeah, okay. But yeah, I'd like more discussion on that to figure out whether, what the trade-offs would be. Starting with, I guess, I think it was in the staff report, the list of grants. It was a really impressive list of grants, and so I appreciate all the work that staff has done to get us some free money. How does this cycle of grant awards compare to previous? Are we getting more money, comparable, same?
I think over time, we are getting more. We're getting much more skilled in our resources and processes for applying and getting it into sequencing. And a large part of that is the adopted plans that council has, so we can cite to our grantors, the comp plans, the specific area plans, and then master plans, like your bike share and bus shelters and so forth.
I saw that we also got $7.50 for the Haycock Crossing, which I believe is separate from the 15.7 NVTA.
Correct.
Do we plan to use it in the same area? Because I've gotten concerns on the Shreve roadside, partially from the Fairfax County neighbors, that that, the other side of the intersection could really use improvements. I don't know if we are at liberty to work with Fairfax County on that, with that additional pot of money we have.
Yeah, we'll have to look at the scope and some of the requirements for that.
Yeah, I think it was a lot of, I mean, I think a lot of, actually, our residents, who kind of walk along Shreve to get to school or get to the metro, and have concerns about that.
And I would just note, Fairfax County is planning an upgrade to that path. It's really just a maintenance activity, but I think that path is going to look a whole lot better, hopefully, this fall.
That's great. Larry Graves, I noticed that the date was now not this winter or fall, it was going to be spring 2019?
Yeah, that's, the Fairfax County Park Authority has asked to push that out. We're working with them to try to keep it on track. And it does relate to the school project. We really want that field working before we start construction up on the high school site, and so, we're pushing.
Okay. And spring sports, I imagine.
Yep.
South Washington. So, I know that obviously, a lot of the streetscape and transit plaza work is going on. I assume after all of the undergrounding's happening, it's going to get repaved? Or we're just not leaving it like this until everything's done, right?
No, it will get a re, part of the project does include the reconstruction, but we also still need to do some of the sidewalk pedestrian and the intersection. So, it's going to be a multi-phase before you see a full repavement.
I don't know if I'm on the council work plan now or the other one, but continue on transportation. The South Maple, I think, Hillwood intersection, the one where the light pole went down?
Yes.
I think I saw that we don't have a good solution, because Fairfax County pulled out their money. Is that right? Or is that a different intersection?
That was South Washington and Maple.
Okay.
We have a good solution. It will be a three-legged realignment that improves it and will still have full signalization. The part that Fairfax County is not participating in is the realignment of Cavalier Trail and what would have needed some right-away acquisition that the property owner isn't currently willing to do. So, we're still pursuing the project. It just won't have a full four-legged phasing, but it won't be a yellow flashing. It'll be full three crosswalks, pedestrian heads, and signals still.
Yeah, I think that end of town is getting a little more pedestrian traffic, so I think people are anxious for something better. So, speaking of other pedestrian signals, North Virginia, I know, had issues over the weekend, or not.
Maple.
North Maple.
Maple.
Right near Doodle Hopper, had issues. And that's the one that had issues before?
That's our problem intersection, and so, council approved funds in the FY19 operating budget to rewire that intersection. And we haven't done it yet, but it is, it is scheduled.
Yeah, the money came available 16 days ago, so having Public Works out there all weekend, I know Mike and Mr. Goff are ready to get that rewired.
NTC. It's good to see that the queue of projects is continuing along. When we visited the Winter Hill neighborhood, I know that they were very appreciative of the new flashing stop sign at Gundry and Annandale. I think one of the other ideas that was talked about is whether we can actually allow for on-street parking in both sides of Annandale, because it's quite a wide street, and people just tend to take that curve in the street really quickly. Is that part of the NTC solution, or the next phase of that solution for Winter Hill?
Since that's also on the work plan, you spoke to Mr. Sykes. You want to do that one?
I spoke with Mr. Sykes about that today, and he'll get an email out to the neighborhood. Yeah, that is still part of the plan. We need to get rid of the yellow markings in the middle, which we're doing right now in North Maple. The, the basic commitment to the Winter Hill neighborhood is that as soon as the last tranche of, of projects was completed, which included Lincoln and North Maple, that the Winter Hill neighborhood would be next in queue for the Neighborhood Traffic Calming Program. And so, that is happening right now. And the CACT meeting, I think, where the solutions will be presented is, is in September.
Okay.
The park project that we just mentioned, Big Chimneys, that has some traffic calming with it as well, along the frontage. And the council approved a grant application for all of Annandale, well, actually, I guess, starting kind of at Gundry.
Yep.
Down to the intersection with South Washington Street. And that's where we think we can do some more sort of structural changes to the street to calm traffic on Annandale.
Cool. In general, I think I just like that, the strategy of doing on-street parking helps slow down.
Yep.
Because there's, obviously, it's a win-win. You get more parking for cars, which is needed in Winter Hill, and it slows down speeds, too. I can stop there, because it seems like I'm in the work plan, and we haven't talked about that yet. So, I can save my next round of questions for the work plan.
Yeah, I'm still on Public Works stuff. So, I think it's too far for anybody to walk, maybe not the mayor, but I'm feeling a bus tour of the openings of the Van Buren Street Bridge and the Roosevelt Boulevard and Roosevelt Street pedestrian improvements, which I drove by there yesterday. They're getting close to being done. And maybe a third thing is, you know, one of our September activities, you know, Public Works awareness effort. Couple other questions, to borrow a page from Ms. Conley. Driving by our bus shelters, which are just fine, except nowhere visible, do they actually say, "Welcome to the City of Falls Church"? I wonder, I noted in your report here that you say project completion is July 2018, which is, I guess, now. I wonder if we could look at putting the name of the City of Falls Church on our bus shelters. They have a very bold, you know, visible, here's where you are at the bus stop, but there's the little city decal, but it's very tiny.
Yeah, each end has the city decal.
Yeah.
And the little city on the other end, and that was the adopted bus shelter plan and logos. Certainly, we could revisit welcoming and other things. It would need to be a different funding source and something we'd put into the future.
Well, as everybody else drives around town, just take a look at them and see if you think, it just seems like a branding opportunity that we missed. I mean, we take for granted that everybody knows, you know, oh, we're in the City of Falls Church, but most people have no idea the difference between us and, you know, Idlewood or whatever. And, you know, our school, Mary Ellen Henderson, does not say City of Falls Church on it. It just says Mary Ellen Henderson School. We just, we miss an opportunity, I think, to remind people where they are.
I think there, I do get comments, but not, you know, I don't know how widespread it is, but people do notice that our bus shelters are different. So, we're starting to get associated with our green bicycle racks and our bus shelters as the City of Falls Church.
Right.
We could certainly look at wayfinding and signage in the future.
Right, just as we, you know, plan in the future. I think the West End Park, I forget. There's a nice sign that says West End Park, I think. I'm not sure. It says City of Falls Church. Either the Bike Bridge, of course, you know, doesn't say City Falls Church. I don't know. It's just something that we ought to think about, you know. We have things that we put up, let's try to put our name on them. This is something that is not on the list, but I did want to raise it tonight, because over the weekend, I took a little stroll over to the cottage, Railroad Cottage Development, which is coming right along, and had a nice chat with the Dorsey's, who we all remember, who have moved back into their house now. And he took me on a little fact-finding walk down Railroad Avenue and noted, of course, it looks like a war zone now because of all the construction. And he understands that. That's not the issue. But, you know, when it's all said and done, when all the work's all said and done, the, the road itself has to be fixed, right? And he asked, or maybe my wife asked, who's paying for that? And it's not just a paving deal, because you've got runoff coming down from the bike trail, you've got storm sewers, you've got things going on. So, and, you know, Ms. Dorsey says now there's some pooling, but again, he's not talking about short-term. He's, he's wanting to make sure that when all the work is finished, that it's graded, so that, you know, the water comes down and goes away in an organized manner. So, I told him that I would bring that up, and since I see Mike is here, perhaps somebody could speak to that?
Good evening. Yes, I'm glad you brought that up.
[laughing]
So, we actually do have something planned for the road. One of the first things that we're going to do is, we've had some drainage issues out there for some time. And so, we just recently had a new house that was sold. The previous owner was not willing to grant us an easement. And so, now we have an easement through there. And so, we do have a stormwater project, which will capture some of the stormwater, which also helps not only the street, but the surrounding areas. So, that's going to become one of the projects. The other piece of this is, we actually have some VCs where Bob Young put in half of the money to actually reconstruct the road. So, we're going to go in, we're going to do the full-depth reconstruction after everything's done with the cottages. And so, we will rebuild the road. We're also going to widen it. And we're putting in these, they're kind of like grasspavers. And this is for the emergency services, so that apparatus can get in and out. So, we do have a plan that should come up sometime this fall, I hope, depending on how the cottages go.
Thank you very much. I assume that you all are out there. Somebody could talk to Mr. Dorsey at some point, just brief him on that. He's had, said he had a good relationship with the, the project manager of the railroad cottages, but this is sort of broader than that, so.
Yes.
Good, great. Okay, thanks. All right, Mr. Snyder?
Here's just a, a general question. The National Association of Home Builders estimated that as a result of the tariffs put on construction materials, that the average price of a new home has gone up $9,000. I'm wondering, as the city's CIP projects move forward, and as we see their costs go up, is it possible we could isolate some of the materials, costs? And I'll be asking other local governments to do the same, because some have said, and this is the position of the Business Roundtable, actually, that this amounts to a tax. And I think people are thinking directly as it affects them. I don't think they're thinking about the impact of this on municipal projects. So, I would be interested if, and I don't want to burden you with adding, you know, a lot of costly personnel costs in order to do this, but if you can sort of keep it in the back of your mind, that it might be useful to begin to quantify the impacts of some of that, it would be very helpful.
We certainly will have the contract dollar amounts, and overall, we're seeing an increase. So, we'll just have to look at how we can monitor materials versus labor.
I mean, the costs of, as I understand it, now the costs of lumber have gone up 50%. And you haven't seen the immediate impact, because people are going through their inventories now. But it's almost palpable, the increased costs. So, it would be interesting if the city could find a way to, you know, without, again, spending a lot of time to find some way to begin to capture that.
We'll have to look at the specific materials.
Why? Do you have any comments on that at all?
Well, I would just say that it's a big concern. Every, every builder we talked to is talking about it. And with the high school contract in negotiations right now, it's been a big area of concern as well.
Yeah. So, any, any data would be helpful.
To quantify it, yep.
Thanks.
Mr. Conley?
I was about to jump into the council work plan, but I'll wait.
Just a few quick questions. The bus stops, which I think are great. It says 12 are in, and this project is completed. If we wanted to do more, it would have to be a new CIP project?
Right, new CIP with new funding.
Okay. I just think they're great. I think, I see people in them all the time and using them, and now that we're going to have our 3T bus back, I think they'll be well-used and appreciated, so that's a good thing.
We're getting a lot of positive feedback for being out of the weather, as council had identified that when we went to apply for it.
The downtown public plaza, can you just talk a little bit about that, that it's on hold?
I can. Or, Mr. Shields, would you like to do that? You've got more direct communication.
So, that's noted on the council work plan as well, so I was going to speak to it. The EDA has, is, is reviewing the budget for it. That project is well over the budget as well, significantly so. And so, I think they are considering their options, and I expect that they're going to take a vote at their last meeting, which is the 30th of July.
So, just as the library had to shrink their project to make it fit within the budget, is the EDA considering that?
The EDA did consider that, and so, the revised numbers are on a slightly reduced scope, and it's still coming in about twice what the budget was.
So, as I go by there, walk past there, drive past there, the people are using that park every single solitary day. Is there a sense that maybe if we just cleaned it up a little bit, and painted a mural on the wall, and added some benches, it would be enough?
Well...
That seems like that would be enough at this point.
That is the discussion, and I don't want to get ahead of the EDA, but that is the discussion we're having, is, okay, if, if that project doesn't go forward, then this still is a really important amenity. And what can we do to make it better? And maybe not at the scale, or, you know, that was proposed, but to do things that will make it a more usable space than it is right now. And we have some ideas on that, but again, kind of, this has been an EDA-driven project. I think it'd be worthwhile just to let them go through their thought process, and, and then we'll go from there.
Okay. I would just like to see something happen there, and if, if they are not going to do anything, I think something needs to happen there. And then, there had been a question from the neighborhood about that Annandale and Gundry intersection. Has what you just conveyed to us been conveyed to those neighbors?
No, Mr. Sykes and I spoke today, and I've asked him to get in touch directly with that same information to, to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else, or if not, why don't you move on?
Just, yeah, a couple of high points on the council work plan. Just to remind the council, with the adopted work plan, this is not meant to be all of the work of the city, but this is really the council, where the council wants to push its change agenda for the city. And they were grouped in the areas of vibrancy and placemaking, in the areas of economic development, marketing and commercial area growth, housing affordability, area of resilience and sustainability, areas of change in our core government services, and then, of course, the major capital projects, the high school, city hall, and library. And those have been touched on with the CIP report. So, if we take that, that basic grouping, a couple of highlights on the vibrancy and placemaking, on bike share, as the council is aware, that money was federalized about a year and a half ago. It has been extraordinarily difficult getting that, that bike share program through the federal rules and through the VDOT review process. But we're working with urgency and persistence to get that through, and we still have a fall target, but we're working real hard to hit that target. The downtown plaza we just, we just mentioned, and the downtown parking, I'll just note that we expect that by the end of July, we will have marked and signed an increase of, what we've actually counted to be about 25 new on-street parking spaces in the downtown area. And that's really intended to help the business community and help our customers find parking in the downtown area. in the downtown area. Yeah.
Is there going to be a publicity campaign around that to the community, when those are up and running?
Yes, there will be. They will be painted on the street, and they'll be signed, so they ought to be very user-friendly, just for anyone driving down the street. On economic development and marketing, the EDA does have an initiative of using our great local TV station to do a video with local business owners, and so I think there's some filming scheduled for next week to get that going. In the area of housing affordability, I will just note that in terms of actual actions, I will just reemphasize, we are moving towards cash option for all of the projects coming through, and we're moving towards, for units and projects, and getting those commitments for the life of the project or in perpetuity. And so those have been big areas of work, and then all the other policy discussions that we had earlier tonight. In the area of resilience and sustainability, the council saw that, kicked off the update to the comp plan for the environmental sustainability chapter of the comp plan. The CPACE ordinance, which many of you all have been briefed on in meetings either through GovOps or the EDC committee, we expect we'll be able to bring a draft ordinance to the council this fall, and adoption this winter. For core government services, I'll just note one thing that is, has come up with neighborhood sidewalks, and this is really the good work of Mike Woodfield and their Public Works folks. We're going to be repaving on Marshall Street, and there's a last section of sidewalk at the end of Marshall Street that ties in, that currently is just a missing gap to tie into Route 29. And we've put together a project to close that gap and put in sidewalk there at the same time that we're doing the repaving of that street. We do have a meeting with the neighborhood planned coming up soon to let them know that, but I think that will be well-received. The council heard a petition on that a couple of months ago. On the efficiency and the budget process improvements, Budget and Finance is working on both of those issues, and at the meeting in August, we'll have a report on discussions that are underway with the school staff, on just doing an assessment of what we do well together in areas where we can have more consolidation of our operations with schools. And then there'll be a discussion of principles and options for revenue sharing for the budget process next year. So that's the, I think that meeting is on August 17th, or thereabouts, mid-August, the third Friday in August. So that's a quick touching base on council work plan items. Be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, one quick question. Can you give me some more detail on the South Washington Street? This is coordinated with Fairfax County. Is this going to impede our ability to deliver that multimodal, or is this something different?
This is different, this is more kind of west of Maple Avenue, or south of Maple Avenue.
But it doesn't impact that project?
No. That project is a large corridor project, and it's in about four segments or phases in order to do everything from South Washington up to Annandale.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure it's not holding that up.
It's in the CIP, but it was already following the normal streetscape and intersection work we talked about earlier.
Great, thank you.
I can assure you, Mr. Lickenhouse, that since Dave, council member Dave Snyder, first voted for that project in the 90s, that it will reach its conclusion sooner or later.
I'm not sure, there's not much that he hasn't voted on at some point.
Why do I get credit for everything not working?
All right, what else do we have question-wise? Ms. Hardy?
Thank you. Wayfinding, we didn't touch on this here, but it looks like there was a, Virginia Tech folks had worked on a wayfinding recommendation. Could we talk about that in maybe an upcoming EDC meeting, so we can spend a little more time on?
Yes, and I have to confess, I haven't read the report yet either, it just landed. And so we want to see what we can learn from it and take away from it, and then consider next steps.
Okay. And then on parking, which is fantastic news, I will echo what Ms. Connelly said. I think we've talked about doing a big marketing kind of campaign about the new spaces, because I think, I view this as the first of hopefully many other changes we'll do to downtown parking. We've talked about kind of a laundry list of other things, and I think the 25 spaces is a really great thing, especially since they're mostly free. So I think it's a great way to not only slow down traffic on Park Avenue and on Maple, but also add parking downtown. But I'd love to actually frame in a way where we talk about it as the first of more changes to come, because we know that this is an important place for the city to invest. And on that note, given that we talked about walking tours, and this council and mayor are fans of walking tours, perhaps we can do a parking, walking tour. We've had kind of an informal task force working on parking, but we can also formalize that, given the attention that we're all paying to parking. So we can talk about that more in the EDC meeting tomorrow morning, Mr. Duncan. I just wanted to let all of council know that, something that we could do. We could probably see the new spaces in action, and look at other opportunities to improve parking in the area.
Okay, other comments?
Thank you.
Mr. Snyder?
Just a quick one. I would like to follow up on the innovation task force, that's one of the yellow items, and I wondered, Mr. City Manager, if we could meet on that and begin to move that forward. I think when you read the potential effects of technology on transportation and other things, it would be really good if the city began to work that into our planning right now, because the changes are potentially significant.
Okay.
Thanks.
Other comments? All right. If not, why don't we move on to our next item, city hall update?
Yeah, so this item is, there's a specific request, and that is to schedule approval of a contract for the purchase of new furniture for city hall for your meeting of January 23rd. And in addition to that, we just wanted to provide an overhaul, just an update on the project. And some specifics, we had a meeting with GovOps to talk about the council chambers and just how that layout will be, and we wanted to share that with the full council. So I'll turn that over to Cindy.
Thank you, Mr. Shields and city council. What I'd like to do is start with the contract award piece, and then we'll do the report out on the GovOps, and there's a couple asks for input for council, and be glad to answer any questions on the overall project or the specifics. So staff has been working on contract options for purchasing of the new furnishings and equipment that we'll need for city hall. And as part of that, we identified two contracts that had ridable options for the city, and both were ones that were with larger jurisdictions with great economy of scale and price points. And so we received proposals for both of those, from those two vendors, matching, in this case, the city hall architects' designs and the layouts for what we needed. The one that we're recommending for council to award, which would, we'd recommend for your council action next week, so that we can start ordering and doing the lead time, because it's at least an eight-week cycle, and so we want to proceed, because of your summer recess and meeting schedule, is with Global Industries, and in particular, working with Washington Group Solutions, they, the authorized vendor. This firm came in with the better prices, good, solid warranty, very responsive. Global Enterprises also is sort of a cradle to grave, in that they do the manufacturing, they do the integration, installation, warranty, maintenance, and if you need a replacement part, they provide it, so they're not bringing it from multiple different vendors. So it's a much more efficient process. And then we have the benefit of the Washington Group Solutions, Washington GS being a city-based business, their headquarters is here in the city. So the recommendation would be to award that contract. It is over the $100,000 threshold, so it requires council's action. We are asking for a contract award up to $500,000, and this is because the contract is through 2020. And the recommendation is to have this available for all city furnishings needs, not just city hall. City hall would be the first one to use it. The dollar amount within the city hall budget is $250,000, so that's already appropriated. There's no request for additional funding from council for this award. But it would allow us to look at the library project for needs that are cost-effective, and as you heard Ms. Callahan speak to, that there'll be limited purchases to stay within budget, but they have very cost-effective conference room, public space, staff space, carousels for the computers and stuff, so that's an option. Also would be for Aurora House when they do new programming stuff, or if here, we need to replace the chairs in this facility, for example. Any additional funding off of this contract, which is similar to what we do with a lot of other job order contracts and stuff, for a lot of the infrastructure projects and operations, it would be appropriated into the budget, so it would not require additional money unless a formal request was before council. So that's the synopsis. We do have some chair samples in the community center tonight that council has the opportunity to sit in, some before the meeting. I'll be available for people to sit in them to test, and this is specifically for the dais furnishings, which I'll talk about in a little more detail in a moment, because that ties to the GovOps. Let me pause for a moment, Mayor, and see if you want to have questions on the contract piece before I progress to the GovOps.
I just want to say how pleased I am that you're using a City Falls Church business to do this, and that it was competitively bid, and they have the best price and the best service. I think that's wonderful. They have been a good corporate citizen, and I'm glad that we can purchase from them.
Okay, anything else?
All right, then, if I want me to move on to the GovOps report, then?
I have some questions on this. So I've got some experience dealing with fitting out places with office furniture and dealing with office brokers. Just a couple of questions about Washington Group Solutions. I take it they're not, you say they're a dealer subcontractor, and here you said cradle to grave, but they're not the manufacturer, though, of the furniture?
No, Global Industries is the manufacturer.
Global Industries?
Yes.
Do you know what brands they?
It's global, that is the brand.
That's the brand?
Yeah.
Okay.
You have like a Herman Miller, global is your next top level of competitor. It was very interesting to research on that, because everybody talks Herman Miller, but they actually are larger and more diverse, and have as good a reputation and warranty as a Herman Miller product.
Yeah, more familiar with like all steel and steel case and those. Did you guys explore secondhand option for some of the furniture that we needed? There's a really broad and fantastic secondary market for office furniture, in some cases that have been used less than a week, that you can purchase for pennies on the dollar. Not to say that we want to buy heavily-used office furniture, but that option for certain pieces, depending on what we want, is, if we do decide to go with that group, that we would float that idea that they may consider that for certain pieces, because I've found that there's some really high-quality used furniture out there.
We've used refurbished systems furniture for a lot of the previous renovations that we've done in city hall. This one, because of the quantity and the specific configuration, we actually looked at trying to do that, and it was costing more to do the piecemeal, putting it together versus manufacturing it. Now I do want to say, we are actually using a lot of furnishings that we have been donated to us from an office building that was going to be demolished. And so we have 60 file cabinets, 60 whiteboards, 60 bookcases, and a humongous amount of lateral files that were all of high quality. And that was a cost-effective way to do that and store it than buying new. So we've actually been able to reduce probably by $100,000 the purchase of new. We will be utilizing some of the city hall former equipment as well. So we have a blending of that to achieve hopefully a durable, well-finished, all-look-alike product, because sometimes when you do the refurbish, you can't get the quantity of matching that fits for the, a lot of our rooms are more systems-designed, so we don't build hard walls that can't be flexible in the future. So we do have a blending of that, but this particular piece will be, a portion of it will be new, just to fit it into the design of the building.
And I would just want to make sure that the pieces that we buy, they've, there's enough supply out there, because one of the issues you run into is that they promise that you're going to have all this furniture, and that we have replacement parts, and that it's under warranty, and then three years later, you need to take down a workstation or add one, and they say, well, that's been discontinued. So if you want it to look like the rest, then you're going to have to buy an entire office worth.
Yes.
So again, I'm not familiar with the manufacture on this, and so I want to make sure that they're going to be around long enough to where we can get those replacement parts.
They have about a 30, 35-year history, and we explored that particularly, and we are picking sort of not a trendy color or style, because we want to be able to, you know, adapt and add and change in the future.
Good, yeah. I'm sorry not to pick this apart, but my history and experience with furniture brokers and getting furniture for offices has not been fantastic, so.
Yeah.
Not even good, actually.
It's definitely a very important and challenging part of the project.
Sounds like you got it covered, though. That's good. All right, thanks.
We did a site visit as well to both, so that we could check it out in person.
Mr. Snyder?
Just a quick question. This is not a project overrun on the city, city hall project?
No, this was already planned, because we needed to have the new furnishings.
Okay. So we're, that's $250,000, but we're authorizing $500,000. Do I assume that the remaining claims on the remaining amount will be for projects that we've already funded?
Correct. This is just an authorization that staff can expend up to that amount with this vendor, but it has to be with appropriated money already approved by council, or future budgets that council would have had action on. So for the library, it would be part of the library budget already appropriated and approved.
Existing library budget, yeah. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions? If not, thank you again for your good work and keeping us, if you could, give us an update on completion and the like? How's that coming along?
Yep, and I wanted to report out on GovOps, so let me, as I start that, pass these documents around to be a resource as we talk. So currently, as you can see, within the confines of the city hall campus, we are actively with many construction parts related to city hall. Coming from the tennis courts behind Great Falls up to city hall, you'll see some trenching. That's the new water line that's been installed, in order to ensure that we have proper sprinkling pressure. That's up to the building. The vault for all the IT conduits, Verizon, Cox, and our own infrastructure is finished in the front, and now those conduits are being run to the new server room, telco room in the city hall construction. In the rear, you can see the block walls going up for the parking structure, and the steel is up for that, plus the chambers and sheriff's area. And on Friday, Mr. Shields and I had the opportunity to be filmed by our own FCC TV to do an update for the community on how the construction is going on the inside, so that's being edited, and we'll hope to have that out soon. The project is progressing nicely, interior and exterior, and we are currently working towards our same schedule, completion of end December, early of January. We do have the block opening in the rear garage now for the future cornerstone, and so continuing to work on drafting that to bring to council to look at approval before we have that engraved. And there's a lot of sheetrock and HVAC and plumbing going on on the inside of the project. On July 3rd, we met with the GovOps committee, and Ms. Hardy attended, so that we could talk about, in particular, the dais layout and chairs, and also sort of the furnishings in terms of the artwork. And I will come back to the artwork in a moment. What I handed out for your review is sort of an update on what you saw last September in terms of the renderings, just to have it as a refresher. If you have questions, we can look at sort of what the chambers layout is, and let me put it up on the screen for... So here we have the council layout, so if you come in the front door, you can see the hallway, the Dogwood Meeting Rooms, and the layout in the dais, just to give you a refresher. This is a rendering from September that gives you the sense of the width of the new central corridor. This gentleman down here by the glass wall is by the Dogwood Meeting Room, and that is divided in half, and here you can see the display cases. When you come in the west wing door, which is just off this rendering, and walk towards the chamber door, that is this walkway here, and you would walk into chambers. That's also the walkway back out to the terrace and the green roof area. And this is the inside of chambers, and in last September, we had talked about the color samples of the teal, the wood of the pews will be the same, but the ends will be painted lighter color to match the new dais. I did bring with me the samples of the glass here today. On the bottom part, this is glass, but it is a shaded glass. Let me get these babies, because they're heavy and I don't want to drop them. And I'm just going to hold them up, I think they're a little heavy, the task forces. So if you want to hold that one up for me. That's the solid one. one, where you'll see daylight coming through, but you won't get people's view, and you'll have the privacy. And on the top is the clear. I lost my rendering there. There we go. The clear is a clear story up here, so you'll have light coming in that'll be above for privacy and security. Like that. Excellent. And at nighttime, you'll get a nice glow through that with the lights inside. And we have roll-down shades, so if the sun was too much, we can block it during the day. That is heavy, heavy tempered glass, one inch thick for insulation, and it'll be security and LEED certified. So I just wanted to share that with council. The colorful drawings that have red are renderings of what the chambers basically will look at, so that you get a perspective if you're sitting at the dais, how the audience will look, looking at you, how if you're sitting at the dais, looking out. And we purposely wanted to share this with you this evening, so you can get a sense that you'll have monitors at the dais, so when we're having presentations like we're doing this evening, you'll be able to look directly at them without having to turn yourself away from the audience or staff speaking with you. The microphones will be up there. What's not on display here, there'll be some data on electric ports, so that you can have your tablets if needed to charge and so forth, so that we can go towards paperless and other options. Red chairs are there purposely, because these weren't designed to select the chairs. It was just a rendering. And then there's also a view of if you're at the dais, looking out at the audience. And it's not done to the full rendering. The last page in that is just to give you a sense that we have done a test for, if somebody's talking to you, that the dais is not blocking the view of the public that you would speak to or staff if we come up to the dais, and that the public can see you. So it's just a schematic design of that. This was important, because we wanted to make good visibility of council to the public while also having a barrier to hide all the cables in the back of the monitors, but it's also a security feature for protection. So that was just a little reference document. One of the additional things that we had talked about at the committee meeting, or two, one was the naming reference to City Hall, and the other is the artwork. So I'd like to touch base first on the name. Currently, as we know, with the sign at the front of City Hall and dedicated, City Hall is a Harry E. Wells building. It's dedicated in his honor. It's currently referred to as the Harry E. Wells City Hall. The architect had proposed whether we wanted to consider a different name, simply because there are multiple uses, and so you could use a municipal building reference, because it refers to offices, courts, police, and is broader. During the committee meeting, I think the initial recommendation was to retain the name that everybody knows, the community knows, as the Harry E. Wells City Hall versus changing it to Municipal Building. So I'll pause there for a moment to see if there's any reaction to that. It would be important, because on the front of the building, let's see, I think I have a view here. It's not very close, but in front of the Harry, the ramp, there'll be letters that are recessed out that will say the name of Harry Wells and then City Hall or Municipal Building, if there's a preference.
All right, I'll launch into this. Is there some more creative titles that other municipalities have used, something that suggests more the people's building, or you know what I mean, something? Just before we maintain that, there, there may be some other examples of, of communicating the values of the city, maybe. And I'll ask the same thing about the art as we get to that later.
Are you talking about changing the name to something like a longstanding city council member who's given years?
Certainly not. The one responsible for all the failed programs. No, no, certainly not.
Certainly can explore that. Any of the past presidents we've looked at tend to be, you'll see Town Hall, City Hall, that type of thing. It's sort of a very traditional civic center placement.
I mean, I, I personally prefer City Hall. I mean, it's a City of Falls Church. I like City Hall. I think calling it the municipal building is confusing. Anything other than that, in my opinion, would be confusing. So I vote to keep it City Hall.
Yeah, I'm sure that everyone had similar discussion, even, either in public or with themselves. So City Hall has a connotation that, you know, it resides within you. Anything else, I think, sounds too much like the People's Republic of something, so we don't need that. I like City Hall for that reason.
Justice League.
The Justice League. I think City Hall is fine. It does occur to me, I mean, I don't know that I ever met Harry Wells, but I certainly, you know, I'm aware of who Harry Wells was. But do we really explain to the public anywhere, even online, you know, who Harry Wells was?
Not online. We actually have very nice plaque dedicated and hung in City Hall, as well as his portrait, but because we didn't have a central lobby or any way to display it, I suspect most people did not even notice it or see it.
That speaks to my question, which is, in the new City Hall, if we're going to call it City Hall, which is fine with me, are we going to bring that back, so people will know who it is that it's named after, as part of our art, you know, effort?
It is officially dedicating his name, and we have saved those two artifacts, as well as I have up on here, this lobby area. And these, there's three display cases, so we have the option of doing static displays of awards and things, working together in the future. We don't have to decide tonight what'll display, if it rotates as a theme, but we have some nice wall area, and the vision is that you would repost those and make it really a central, visible place, so people know where they're walking into, as well as the name that would be mounted on the outside on the ramp.
Yeah, I think that's
And then, you know, the white sign at the corner of Park in Little Falls.
I think that's fine.
That as well.
Only one of the suggestions, maybe this is getting over into the art, I'm not sure what that entails, but I, and this is serious. I think that the vision, the 2040 Vision Statement, should be somewhere prominently posted. I don't know that it has to be in stone or glass, but, you know, I do think it ought to be there in our City Hall as a sort of statement of vision and purpose, because it's a nice statement, and hopefully it'll be around for a while.
That's certainly something we could accommodate, and that might be a nice segue into sort of the art piece and some opportunities. So thank you for that. I have on the screen the lobby area first, and I wanted to point this out, because this white wall here is your current wall in chambers, and it now becomes your exterior wall. So the four windows that we had before are still there, but in between are wonderful areas for art, and there will be some benches underneath in there, so we could have some seating area, as well as openness for reception and wayfinding. So you have, this is sort of an art option to have in mind. I just went too fast. In this upper version, this is the one, and you have a hard copy of it with my little annotation of a check mark. Council had selected to have this wall done, which is currently brick and sheet rock and painted, and so that will be the wall that the portraits can rehang, as well as in the back. You currently have four portraits of our important, significant founding patrons and gentlemen. There's space for additional ones. There's been comments and interest of expanding who's posted there. So you have that area, and you have the lobby area to open and have a conversation about art and what we want to message, including, you know, the values and visions of the city. The G corridor, as we finally refer to the corridor outside of where we used to meet in Dogwood for work sessions, is going to remain available as a white wall, and Falls Church Arts has expressed interest to continue to have the rotating exhibit. So that's another option for council. So we have some really, three nice public space areas for art, in the broadest sense of that, including traditional portraits and other opportunities. So at the July 3rd meeting, we had started brainstorming, what would, what could be a process and a mechanism to decide who else could be hung that represents more broadly the city's interest in inclusion, diversity, and other key, significant city leaders. You know, could that be a call for input and ideas, and then consolidated down for a committee's review and some processing? And Mary Beth had had an example for how Jesse Thackeray School was named. We've certainly done some modeling similar on a smaller scale with the car decals, and then eventually come to a recommendation that council then would decide on the what's hung and how hung. This is something that's outside of the current budget for the project, so as we look at formal paintings or framing or mechanism, we'll need to talk about budget, or could a nonprofit in the community be a partner in this. So let me stop there and ask Ms. Connolly or Ms. Hardy, as part of that conversations, are there things you would add, and your thoughts for going forward?
At that meeting, we talked about identifying a staff member who was going to be the, the point person on what those portraits would be. I don't know if you had a chance to talk to that person?
The, we do have ideas on who that point, we need a point person for it, and so I'll publicize who that is and shortly.
Eventually. Okay, so there'll be a point person who will run that as a staff person. We talked about having a committee doing the final selection that included community members, as well as art teachers and history teachers from the school who are embedded in the community that way. I was at the, I know several others also were at the July 4th readings, the Veepis July 4th readings, and I took a picture. In the back, there's actually the history of the portraits was in that booklet. And it said, it was like, it took 10 years to get those four portraits up there, and Veepis raised the funds for it. So it was like 1984, they had the first ones donated, and then they did 10 more years of fundraising until they got the second one. So hopefully, it won't take us that long, but it was a community-funded project. It wasn't city.
These are the portraits that are
The original portraits, right.
That are in, that were in council chambers before?
Yes, 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 yes. So there's this lovely, page-long description of that, that I just remembered that I had taken a picture of. So that was part of it. And then, the other thing we talked about, or maybe I just talked about it afterwards, you know, those are oil paintings that we have that are reproductions of famous oil paintings. Will we need oil paintings? Can we have a photo gallery? And then the selection process of who those people will be. I don't think we need all oil paintings. Well, and, and then the committee would have to come up with, do we want to have just deceased people on the walls? Do we want to honor living people who are still with us, that have made us? Who would be pleased to be recognized on the walls of our
That's got to be my beat there.
There you go. Right. I mean, we also talked about the importance of diversity and local people, as well as national, other national people who we think might need to be recognized. But we didn't see, I don't think that we came up with a specific number. It was more open-ended, let's see what we get and how we can fund this.
You certainly have options with what can go in chambers, with the rear wall and the sidewall, and then with the lobby, you've got at least the four spots in between the windows, needing to leave some sign for wayfinding and space like that. So a lot of options. You don't have to fill all the spots. Certainly, it can evolve over time as well.
And we did talk about putting up a picture of council members?
Yes.
Yes, in the lobby.
We can have the council formal portrait with your vision. So tonight, for this particular piece, is to get sort of some input and reaction as to council's directive, and then we can, staff can flesh it out a little bit more and bring a more formal proposal back.
Mr. Snyder?
Sure. I mean, I hope we are additive in terms of the diversity. I think we need to be. There, there is one name of a former president that lived here that I've proposed before and haven't gotten anywhere, but Ike and Mamie Eisenhower both lived here at one point, and I'll say it, compared to the current president, there is no comparison. But Ike was the supreme commander. He was a president who ordered the troops to enforce desegregation in Little Rock. And I think he and Mamie both warrant at least some consideration in the mix of all this, because there is a direct local connection. He lived here while he worked at the Pentagon. Anyway, just, just a thought to put in play.
Do you, this is a minor point, but other jurisdictions have speakers set up, so you don't have to go into the council meeting to actually hear what's going on, like you could actually, if you're waiting for a case, you don't have to keep opening the door and kind of coming in. Some other local jurisdictions will have speakers outside, and sometimes even a TV, you know, so you can actually see the proceedings without going in and out to interrupt them or to kind of hear what's going on, or if you want to talk. You're not going to miss anything. I don't know if any thought been given to that?
We're still finalizing the AV and the configuration, and certainly we can do that. We actually used to have that in our council chambers till the remote speakers all failed.
Yeah, you could hear it down in the Dogwood Room or out in the lobby.
So we'll certainly make that as a notice. We work to finalize the AV, because we will have new speakers run and new microphones, actual TV equipment room for the recordings of both meetings to be able to be live. Planning to have some screens in the lobby area to say what the meeting room is scheduled like, and then we can add some, I mean, that's pretty simple in some ways with it being live on Granicus, because you can just go to the website without having to do a lot of programming. So we'll make that as a note.
I think it's a great idea. Which reminded me, will we have like a digital tablet outside or in the main entrance, interactive map that allows you to search for offices, rooms, individuals?
Initially, maybe, maybe not. It depends a little bit about the, the funding as we get through the final AV piece. But those are types of things. We're working with communications and key staff that have to do wayfinding and directions.
I found those incredibly helpful in government buildings, if you can search for individuals and offices and rooms. That's the cheaper option. We could do that, yeah.
When we have the video, it hopefully will be visible on the what we've just recorded last week, and it will be more so as the construction ends. But when you walk into the center corridor now, it is really easy to see the for-service counters where you need to go, so it'll be less of the where's Waldo kind of thing. So I'm hoping we don't need as much of an interactive map, but there still could be some helpful directories that we will need to do.
All right, anything else? We do have a close.
On the portraits, I mean, are you looking for just discussion or action, or what? I mean, I think it's a great idea to have portraits, and I think we ought to have a wide-open community, you know, selection process, that some staffer would be burdened with trying to collate all the data on and let people nominate, and I think it'd be an interesting exercise to see what our community comes up with. And I don't know if you want to have a vote on it or something, but I think that sounds like a nice community-building activity to have that discussion.
That is interesting. Input that we were interested in getting to make sure we're on the right path, if we're going to develop that, that council would support that.
Okay, anything else? If not, we have a closed session as well. All right, why don't we take a five-minute break, so we can get the mics cleared up and use the restroom if we need to, and come back with a closed session? So we do have, I guess, two items for closed session tonight. Is that right? So I'm going to go ahead and read this motion. Upon a motion made by council member
Connolly.
And seconded by council member And passed by a voice vote of city council. Council went in a closed session pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711.3 for discussion of acquisition of real property for a public purpose where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy, and pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711.8 for consultation with legal counsel regarding legal matters requiring such advice by such counsel, in particular, participation in opioid litigation. Council member Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Littkin House?
Yeah.
Snyder? Snyder?
Yeah.
Zee?
Yes.
Tarter? Yep. Okay. All right, guys, let's get ready. Upon a motion made by council member... Council... All right. Seconded by council member... And passed by vote of city council, council reconvened in open session. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Zee?
Yes.
Tarter?
Yes.
All right, we're coming out at 11:59. Is that 11:59, 10:59? 10:59, it just feels like 11:59. This is a certification. Upon a motion made by council member...
Connolly.
Seconded by council member...
Hardy.
And passed upon affirmative roll-call vote in open session, it was certified that only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened, were heard, excuse me, discussed or considered in the closed session or meeting by the city council. Councilmember Connolly?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
Hardy?
Yes.
Lichtenhouse?
Yes.
Snyder?
Yeah.
Zee?
Yes.
Tarter? Yep. All right. What else we got tonight? Okay, what else?
A bunch of us are going down to VML on Thursday.
I have an early...
Going early?
I have the early meeting, yep. Speaking of VML, the call for entries for the Innovation Awards came out. Are we applying for some awards this year?
We are currently working on it, yep.
Do you... Which ones?
Staff are just still developing the recommendations, so we can prioritize them. The one for sure that we did last year but wasn't up long enough is the food composting one. We're working on others.
It was notable to me last year that some of the ones that won, I thought, oh, we do stuff better than that. We should get those awards.
What else?
I will be at the Library Board of Trustees meeting on Wednesday evening, and will relay all of the concerns that were addressed here. So if you think of anything else before then, let me know.
Tiles.
Got the tiles, already mentioned it. And I will reiterate Mary Tarter's desire to have more input on the layout.
And for council's awareness, the City Hall on the east wing had a matching tile panel, like is in the stairwell at the library. That's preserved, and we'll come back up in City Hall. And a reminder, I have chairs that you all can sit in, that if you would like to test them out before we return them.
All right, what else we got?
Quick question, and this is for the city attorney. Is it very clear that the contract is cancelable and if the bonds aren't issued and we don't get the commercial development we want? That was a fundamental point in the vote. It was a fundamental question that came up repeatedly. So how is that dealt with?
There's a termination for convenience provision. And until we have a comprehensive agreement, there's a cost cap that they cannot spend more than the bonds that have already been issued, or they will not incur a cost more than the bonds that have already been issued at this time.
How much is that right now?
It's 6.5 million.
6.5. Okay, that... I was going to ask. It sounds like it's a good approach.
Their contractor, I think, will need to begin ordering things. In particular, they want to order steel, as prices are being affected by tariffs. But they are...
That's not all.
But they have agreed to put that cost cap in.
Okay, great. Another question I had was constituent has approached me, and this is sort of a micro-issue on Founder's Row, but important to the neighborhood. There's a strip of land there by the bike path that sort of is a buffer. And that needs to be micro-worked on, so that they know exactly what... Vipis has some stuff there now regarding the bike path, but that's a huge issue where they're looking for much more specificity. It's a little bit of land there, the bike path. There's like a land buffer there. As you're going up Grove, it's on the left-hand side. It's that area right there. And it seems like a small thing, but neighbors have approached me in saying they don't know the status of it. They've read stuff. They don't understand what's going to happen there. And they view that as fundamental, as sort of a buffering.
Right now, it's just showing the screen space.
Yeah, I mean, they...
By the way, there's still... There was a lot of discussion at the Architectural Advisory Board.
At the AAB meeting last week, which lasted till like 10:30, there was a lot of discussion about pedestrian crossings right there. So they're still moving. There's still discussions about where they're going to put those pedestrian crossings, whether they're going to be raised, and then what that ingress egress off of the trail is going to look like. So it's still evolving.
Okay. So I'm just raising it, because one of the neighbors that has been constructive over the course of the years really is interested in that, so...
All right, what else we have?
Move to adjourn.
All right, it sounds like a plan.